My name is Keith Romano. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is, it is February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the time is seven oh four P M. All rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic of the nations, one nation, under God, indivisible, and one in all.
I'll take a roll call. The members and commissioners, staff members during tonight's type of meeting, please answer here. President, starting myself, Keith Romano, chairman here. Eric Lindstrom, vice chairman.
Here.
Brian Kelly, secretary is not here. Rick Smith to my left.
Here.
Jim Stewart, who is a licensed engineer and surveyor in the state of Connecticut.
Here.
Shiro Valerie, planning and zoning inland wetlands enforcement officer.
Here.
Kathleen Gallagher, planning and zoning administrator. Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
Here.
Great. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. Inland Wetlands Mission Statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetlands Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Meeting Procedure. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment and compliance with state law, Public Act twenty-one dash one as such. This meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating or participating remotely shall state their name and title if applicable at the outset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat feature will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. Ask that applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. Meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro and opposition or of general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct or timely through minutes maybe imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence or testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. The meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
All right. This is now the general public participation portion of our meeting. There's anybody here in the chambers tonight or online that would like to address this commission about a wetlands related matter that is not currently before us or to be in force, be before us in the near future, please raise your hand. Hold on, dear, anybody online, unmute yourself. Okay.
Who would like to?
Yes, you would like to.
All right. Okay, who's this?
Audrey Perrin. I would, I, I just wanted to state my concern. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping I'm. It's my time.
What, what do you, about something that has nothing to do with what's in, what's on the agenda tonight? Do you have any questions for the commission?
No, I'm sorry. No, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? This is odd.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Baldino, she was solely engineered. We'd just like to make a request that to add deliberation for a public, to set a public hearing for two oh five Spring Hill Road, which had materials submitted to your office in advance of this meeting. We'd just like to make a request to have that added to the agenda.
I think it is. Is it?
It, not two oh five Spring Hill. Two oh five Monroe Turnpike is on the agenda, not two oh five Spring Hill.
Um, all right. So we have to vote on that, right?
Yes.
To add it to the agenda, yes.
Well, I'll say is we.
This is for determination?
Yes, we'd like to set a public hearing tonight.
That?
We'd like to set the public hearing for.
Oh, stick it on for the next one.
Correct.
Okay, um, anybody want to?
Can we have this, the materials?
Due to staffing, time for review, items that are already on the agenda over the next couple of months, we as staff did not put it on for deliberation, for determination for a public hearing tonight, just because of the way the scheduling is working out. We understand that the applicant is making that request. However, we did not put it on for tonight's agenda, but it will be on for the following agenda. And I believe most likely we'll have a meeting on the twenty-eighth, and we take no objection at being on for the agenda for the twenty-eighth.
Make a motion add? I mean, we have nothing.
Deliberate tonight or?
No, just to get them on the agenda and decide whether it's public or, or regular, but since we don't have any information, what does that mean?
It's like the continuation.
Okay.
Are you requesting a public hearing?
Oh, great. Okay. So that makes it less difficult. Yeah. Motion, motion, anyone?
I'll, I'll motion.
Got a motion with Christian Lindstrom to add two oh five Spring Hill Road to the agenda. Got a second?
Second.
Second by Christopher Stewart, all favor?
Aye.
Are you also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, all right, motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Sir. Okay, now. Application acceptance, regular hearing, hearing determination. I W C two thousand seventeen, I'm sorry, two thousand eighteen dash zero, uh, dash zero seven, zero one file, eleven forty-five. Uh, two oh five Monroe Turnpike, request a modified permit to change new building from office to self-storage, including revisions to grading, wall location and drainage improvements, two oh five Monroe Turnpike LLC owner, solely engineering LLC representative.
Again, for the record, my name is Matt Baldino, place professional engineering. Here on behalf of the applicant, two oh five Monroe Turnpike, I would like to just provide a brief overview. Would like to request that the public hearing be set for one month for the meeting on March thirteenth. Uh, but just want to go over a quick overview on the project. This is kind of this has been before this commission before. Uh, the project was previously, um, previously approved of the medical office in the rear of the site. So the project site is located where the current Panera Bread is in the front of the site. Um, and the noble gas with the subdivided portion of the other side of the front of the development. So as mentioned, the site was previously approved by this commission with a medical office, a ten thousand square foot medical office in the rear of the site. Uh, we are seeking to put a self-storage facility, a little, little bit over a hundred thousand square feet, over four floors. Uh, we recently received a, uh, planning and zoning approval through a special development district to allow for that use. Um, and we would be here before you to modify the plans to accommodate such use. Just a quick overview of the plans before, um, and then those that are proposed. Um, primarily the development changes would be located within the previously approved, um, parking area. So as you can see here on the south side of the medical office building, we had a larger parking, uh, facilities with underground detention system there. Uh, we would be proposing, um, you would expand the building footprint into that previously approved, uh, impervious area, uh, and then just to provide, uh, similar, uh, screening from a landscape perspective as well, uh, along the residential property, uh, on the west side. And then we did provide a quick overlay, um, tonight to just show, uh, the limits of what was previously approved, um, and what is proposed. Um, in its place, the betweening wall would be moved slightly closer to the wetland. But the overall development, uh, limits to the south would remain, uh, similar to that previously approved. Would that happen to any certain questions on the other commission, the determination?
Any, any parking spaces?
Yeah.
All right, let's go. See.
Twenty-one associated with the, um, storage side.
Customers, and then the rest are for, uh, boys.
So the rest of the parking spaces would be kind of shared amongst the, the, of course.
Twenty-one additional parking spaces.
There is no additional parking spaces from all this previous paper. So we've, these, uh, in move the parking area on the south side of the site. So before with the medical office, we had kind of a looped parking facility on the south side. In this scenario, we would just have access on the south side of the building. Um, and then all the parking would be located in the front of the site.
Previous slide that had the, the red coloring on it, what, what page, yeah, what page is that? Do we have that in our packet?
We have not submitted that yet. That was one of the comments from staff was to provide overlay exhibits of what was previously approved. And we're working through those and it would have those in advance of the public here.
Um, so to follow up online, uh, would you consider south side parking if it was, if there was a problem? Can we, is there any south side parking that could be?
Yep. So, so one of the things that, that we did submit as part of the planning and zoning approval to establish this district was we submitted a parking generation data for self-storage uses, basically comprising, uh, I believe, five other locations um, that they had to establish a parking rate through planning and zoning for this use. And then this, the proposed parking is in compliant with that requirement.
This, that's statistics. I'm just wondering if it turns out to be a problem, what would you do?
If it turned out, so this is above what, beyond what they have anticipated. Um, again, these are typically used, but we could, um, you know, revisit the south side as far as access and providing an additional shelf there.
Exactly.
However, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are sloping down in that south side, wanting to get access to the bottom floor. So as it relates to parking, they're actually trying to provide access on the lower level. Um, so it would, from a grading perspective, we, planning and zoning appreciates that happening because it reduces the change in elevation from the back of the building down to the existing property line. So if they were to create additional parking there, they would either have to figure out a way to kind of sneak it in at that lower level, which was difficult.
Too congested for, for trucks and such.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good. I was just asking. One thing I would want to see is a plan without changing the, you don't change the layout, so let's see, walls and all stuff that's previously approved. Like whatever you do with the area that's, you know, was in the, the construction part, but without moving stuff around, what would that, you know, how would, would that, would, how would that work?
Yeah.
I guess business you want to map, I think it do, but if we already, you know, we're, we moved, we had a wall that was pretty damn close to the wetlands as it was, and it looks like I think that's one of the ones you want to move.
Yes, so we would be looking to modify that wall, right, but I'm not.
Maybe it probably worth it to do a schematic of what it would, you know, how it would come out if you just didn't change any of the grading. I mean, I understand you're driving under, right? So it's less fill, right?
Well, yeah, so that.
Drive under.
You're gonna, instead of having that wall all at the elevation of the top before, and you can see that previous wall actually wrapped around the property more. Um, so we would be able to, because we are, be sloping down, so that wall was previously as shown in red here, all the way down here and continued. So we'd be able to make the wall shorter by doing this because we're sloping down to get to the access on the, the side. So the wall.
Well, than the previous plan.
Yes.
But you're, and you're encroaching closer to the wetland.
Correct.
Right. So I think I would want to see it if you didn't change the direct impact for the wetland, what it would work out for you guys.
I, under either plan, neither would be a direct wetland impact. This would be.
If you're moving a wall.
Upland review area.
Moving a wall, this wall built it?
The wall is under construction rather than.
Right. But I'm saying that if you're moving some of it closer to the wetlands.
Yes.
Than previously. I think I'd want to see it as if you were not doing it, what the impact would be.
Yeah, we can certainly bring that to the, to the meeting.
Um, any other question?
Just as a quick clarification, for them to be able to do that, they have to adjust something. So either the size of the building, the width of the drive aisle, something of the sort. Is that what you're looking, or you're more looking for an overlay of similar to what's there, which is the previously approved on top of the proposed?
I'm saying that if that was like, if, if, like, if we were to, other commissioners and whatever, myself, were to say, well, we're okay with this, but we already approved a pretty aggressive, you know, application previously surrounding the wetlands. Let's let that level of impact, that limited disturbance, so to speak, stay and just make it work with what you have.
Well, there's, there's, we're talking about two separate items. So their limit of disturbance is not expanding, correct?
So.
Your.
Limit of disturbance is expanding on that side, but moving up on the south side. So net, you're decreasing the limit of disturbance within the upland review.
Got it.
You are getting closer on one side and further on another.
Understood, understood. Okay, that's a good clarification. So, but they, they still, so when you look at it, you're still gonna have, something's gonna have to decrease, right? The size of the building, the driveway.
In order to push that wall back where it was, that would restrict the access on to the lower side, or that would potentially reduce the building size.
So I think this would also be considered as a prudent alternative, you know, something to look at if it's possible to, to keep it within that, which is another realm of requests by the board. Okay.
Right. Yeah, we probably would also provide that as well. What is that, instead of asking for it at the first meeting, we're kind of giving a heads up?
Yeah, appreciate it. Thanks.
Um, so want to make a motion? Any other questions, Brad? Motion? Public or, or public hearing? Oh, yeah. All right. Motion for public hearing, Commissioner Lindstrom? Speak up, someone.
You have to give him your reasons.
Right, and you need, I was gonna say, stand on the record, please, your reasons for holding the public hearing.
Your impact on the.
Oh, yeah, because the impact on the, yeah, public interest and impact on the land, we're changing what they, was originally approved, so.
A check of that. All right. So we got a motion for Commissioner Lindstrom, a second from Commissioner Smith, all favor?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, ready for meetings, non-public hearings, I W C twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, A one, file thirteen eighty-two, twelve seventy-one Monroe Turnpike, propose to modify permit to increase number of residence units from.
I'm sorry, um, since we, since you added an item to the agenda as a receipt and, and determination.
Oh, right, that was.
So maybe we could do that now before we get to public hearings.
Okay.
Right? Yeah.
You can make this quick, right?
Yes.
All right.
Good evening again, for the record, Matt Baldino, licensed professional engineer, solely engineering, also dedicated to travel and mainstream hearing. So the application, uh, for two oh five Spring Hill Road includes, uh, as the bottom of a current stormwater basin was identified as, as wetlands. We'd be looking to expand that stormwater basin as part of that application, therefore having an impact on the wetlands. Therefore, we'd like to request a public hearing for, for that application be set for, for the meeting on March thirteenth.
I just asked staff, did the application look like it was complete?
We did not have a chance to review thoroughly. That's why it was not on the agenda for tonight.
Chance to thoroughly do it again.
It doesn't, if they don't get a, a one in time, they'll just take it off. They don't get the paperwork in time.
Okay.
We're not gonna get any completion.
We're doing it?
Hmm. Okay, yeah.
You're the, you're the.
Motion to, uh.
And your reasons for, uh, on the, you're gonna have a public hearing, again, stating your reasons as well on the.
Public impact.
Okay.
Second, second. So a motion for Commissioner Lindstrom, second for Commissioner Smith, all favor?
Aye.
This, uh.
Thank you.
Hearing is come public. Thank you. Okay, now we're out to public hearing. I W C twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, zero, A one, file thirteen eighty-two, twelve seventy-one Monroe Turnpike proposal to modify permit to increase number of residence units from nineteen to twenty-five, increase impervious surface, add new septic area within the one hundred foot, upland review area, Ridge Builders LLC applicant, Jay Edwards Associate LLC representative.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, to open the public hearing, um, since our secretary is not here, I was hoping that Commissioner Lindstrom could read the legal notices into the record. I think they might be over there.
The notices.
Be.
Is that thing with the highlighted, the yellow?
Be, no, 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 sorry. I'm there only to say, so it might just be buried, so.
It's okay. I didn't see anything in my desk.
Yeah, I didn't see anyone. I sat down.
Definitely should be here.
What about me? What about me? Are these on? No.
I know they were definitely here. They were stapled together.
You're all hot.
We don't need those.
They're files.
All right. Let's read the whole page.
Uh, yeah, just read, read it.
In accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, it's seven P M, or sooner, uh, via hybrid. Um, do you want me to read the phone numbers and the meeting IDs, all right?
I don't think you need to read that part, right?
All right.
Nope, just the application as.
All right, I W C twenty twenty-one, uh, dash nine, A one, file one three eight two, twelve seventy-one Monroe Turnpike proposal to modify permit to increase residential units from nineteen to twenty-five, increase impervious surface and add new septic area within one hundred feet upland review area. Ridge Builders LLC applicant, Edwards Associate LLC representative. Keep going.
You could, you could read them both now, or you could read the second one before the other public.
All right, then we have I W C twenty twenty-three dash eleven, file number one four six seven, fifteen thirty-six and fifteen sixty-four Monroe Turnpike, proposal to subdivide nine lots and install new road with associated improvements across the wetland and watercourse. Jan's Land Development LLC applicant, Jay Edwards LLC representative. I think these are both the same. Anything else on here?
Read like the information about the date, time and address and and they were noticed.
Fine.
I'm listening.
And so this is what we're supposed to read to the, that part.
Yeah, that last, do you want me to read the numbers?
I'm sorry, not that part, but yes, that's this information here.
Yeah, so I just read all the, all the, and then we keep going on here. Okay.
Yeah, hold on a sec.
Recognizing Jason Edwards, Jay Edwards, and the associate, then here, surveyor, forty seconds, Stephanie Rose. One hearing, uh, nineteen, very, project. This is in the middle. This is just rendering of the, the site development plan that we've prepared. The project history, uh, well, site location, this is, uh, right next door to High Meadow condominiums. It's opposite the, um, the firehouse and Old Door Road in the west, front Simon Road Turnpike, trailside drive is, is, uh, cross. High Meadow condominium, this year, this new year, it exists a major district and many of them were built back in the eighties and nineties, I believe. Uh, in two thousand and one, we came before this commission with a, uh, this is the current plan that we're proposing on, in fact, this is, uh, the twenty twenty-one plan that was approved in twenty, submitted in twenty twenty-one and approved in twenty twenty-one. Um, for twenty-seven units on this property, uh, at that time, uh, the, the applicant is going to do a mix of, uh, attached units and detached units, uh, so you can see there was larger buildings, uh, well as, uh, smaller buildings in the back. There's also a clubhouse, uh, maintenance building, some sort, um, and, uh, the access road, you'll see follows the, though really the only path that it could follow through the, through the wetlands and then up around. So this is an overlay of that plan within the, what we are proposing now. Um, the blue, which is tough to see, but that blue is the outline of the of the twenty twenty-one approach plan, uh, relative to the orange, which is what we're currently proposing. So, yeah, in most, I think all areas we are, except for maybe the upper section of phase one, um, the northern section there, we're, we're farther from the wetlands. But the most important thing in my opinion is that the limited disturbance is, is the same as it was. We're not increasing that, but, um, we're not appearing more than what we had originally. And just for comparison's sake, the twenty-one plan that you approved, uh, had two point nine acres in the impervious area versus this plan has two point eight acres. So we are slightly less than what we approved, uh, in the twenty-seven unit layout. Now it's just the regular, what that might feel like. Twenty twenty-two, uh, the applicant, uh, at the time, uh, wanted to go with a, uh, detached layout. So, uh, the zoning regulations at that point only allowed for configuration that got nineteen detached units. Those are a mixture of two and three factor units. Um, again, it followed the same access road, uh, and, and actually the phase one layout that you see here has not changed from what we're proposing now. It's actually been approved through planning and zoning. It's under construction now. So they do have a permit for this. Um, so we have this approved and we're, we're coming back to modify it. Um, so phase one, that entry, except for some changes to the drainage that requested by D O T, uh, this is more or less the, the same. Again, the limited disturbance is, is. And this is an overlay of those two plans. So yellow is on the orange. You can see that it's essentially the same. And then in the rear, where the changes are, are really, uh, were, were made, uh, the road layouts configured differently, um, but again, the limited disturbance has remained the same as the original approval. And that, the yellow did that significantly less impervious area, uh, that was two acres. But when we had designed the twenty-seven units for the larger impervious area, we, we did not change the drainage at that point.
Sure.
It had the capacity for this, this, uh, larger, uh, for the, the larger original, uh, amount of stormwater. Um, we also submitted a report from Stephen Danzer, who, uh, prepared the original environmental impact report, so we have to prepare a, a updated one. And he did find that the development, um, since professional opinion, the proposed activities will not significantly impact, so change, diminish or otherwise all the deep learning communities and the problems and values of the pre-wetland areas. And this was the nineteen unit. This is a couple of shots, let's see. Yeah, so, so just to recap, this is an approved, uh, development plan, nineteen unit plan, it's approved, it's under construction. So we are coming in to add units, uh, but within the same footprint that's been approved. The drainage, uh, has been, you know, redesigned in the sense that's been recalculated. We've actually, uh, upped the, we've, we've made it, made it to meet the standard of the, the new stormwater manual. So that's one point three inches for water quality volume versus, versus the one. But it used to be one, so we've got the additional water quality volume that will be required as of, uh, on September this year, uh, so we've improved that. So that's, that's really the, some of my presentation. Any questions on?
Do you have a, um, a map with a hundred foot upland floor?
Yeah.
That has that phase line going here. That, that red line.
Yeah.
Is it in there?
Yes.
You blow it up?
We have it in our packet?
Yeah. Yeah, you should. As it's a red line, it's one hundred.
But that one I like because it has the phase line going through. Yeah, okay. Do you blow, is there any way to zoom in on that?
Let me just switch to, yeah.
Anyways, the, um, this is you, as orange as you. Yeah, I put on a, those are the septic field. So the, so, so the three, like, that's like.
Yeah, especially.
This has no effect on, uh, three of the four. It only has this one, right? It only affects this. Right, the donkey model, leechy fields and septic tanks. But they're in the same, all this is. You know, let's all. Close on, right, that's a, yeah. Phase one doesn't have any septic tanks or leechy fields within a hundred feet. This definitely does. I think, so we'd have to see that overlay every month. Do you have, um, where is that dotted line? That line, solid dotted line, that was the initial approved. I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that dotted line is the approved from previously?
The L O D line is the same limited disturbance that we had, both in every application.
We're in the same location.
They've slid, but they're all within the same distance of the.
Well.
If you have some, if you have some, if you like. If you'd like to pull up.
You added you added a couple or are they somewhere else? They're up for.
We had to add some, but we.
In the upland review?
I don't think we had it.
Or how many did you add to the upland review? Right now, you got what's.
So let's do.
Yeah.
Well, this is what this is what was approved by this commission in twenty twenty four. Now, the second plan is twenty nineteen, I would done staff. We didn't bring it back to the guys, they approved his on staff law, and then we went to.
Were that were those were those combined units on a shared septic?
Yes.
Four houses, four houses were on a share.
Yes.
So that would be.
That would be this blue right here, and you could see where that is in relation to our septic's on the black in the rear there.
So you gotta be close to the same septic capacity in the upland review.
Yes, yeah, we're not, yeah, it's kind of.
Not like you jammed a couple more units worth of septic in the upland review area.
No, no, there was one septic apple probably there. But you had a large septic here, that was a lot more volume.
He had an apartment complex there initially.
Well, there's like pots, like you had two that were four units.
But there weren't any septic tanks associated in that area.
No, they're right here.
No, and that's for the for the space to what you're looking to prove before. What I'm saying, what we.
No, there's three plans, just so you know, there's three. The first one had four or two, four units like condos right on that back side backing up to the to the to the wetlands part. And then the second approval was nineteen individual homes. And now they're to twenty five individual home. But the added septic load is outside the upland review area.
I think I am ninety percent sure.
Or or the majority of them.
There you can see the yellow versus the black here. So this is the yellow is the nineteen, so we had one, two, three, four, five, and we're gonna have one, two, three, four, we still have a five, so that hasn't changed.
So six, the one down, good. Yeah, that one.
There's more segments, but they're not in that limit category. So there's there's one, two, three, four, five, yellow. And I thought they were in the same location here. There really wasn't other locations to put them in that, you know, along there. So they slid a little bit here to to better fit with the units, but.
So there's no net increase in.
Yeah, the bedroom counts I could reduce. We have less bedrooms than we had in the last nineteen. So we were, well, no, I'm sorry, it's the same bedroom.
But you didn't add anything into the upland review area. That's kind of what we're getting at.
We moved things. Didn't didn't add anything, right?
It's still probably what? Everything's probably over seventy five feet from it, from the actual wetland line.
That's.
Like the first fifteen, twenty feet, right?
Yeah.
We're on the outs.
The wetland, the blue way back here, this is the conservation unit, the hatch area. So the wetland is the blue area back here, my blue line. So it's farther back than this. And the L O B is is in the same one.
You're saying it pretty much.
So may I ask a question? But I couldn't hear everything you're saying, is that all I'm saying?
Oh, no, not yet. You're are you you're gonna you have a chance to speak when we're done with the presentation. All right, so you're ready to.
There's no more questions.
I have one thing, do you have the green cards?
I can either email.
They were emailed, I'm sorry. Okay, and I just wanted to read the exhibits into the record, just for the record. Exhibit one dated twelve, twelve eleven twenty three application and plan set by Jason Edwards. Exhibit two dated one, two, twenty four engineering comments by James De Mayo. Exhibit three, one, twenty three, twenty four, response to comments, Jason Edwards. Was there anything else that you wanted to submit? I think, okay.
I think that was all we had responded to your last round of comments. I don't know that he responded to us yet. In a conversation with him, there was one issue on the cul-de-sac side that we're still discussing, but I don't think there was anything.
I'm not sure we got those response to comments, though, the wetlands office, I mean, he might have gotten it.
I don't know if he.
Okay, so that might be exhibit that we need to.
Uh, I that that was given to the, sorry, this is James De Mayo Town Engineer. Yeah, that is in the exhibits or it shouldn't be, because it was submitted to the wetlands office. And then, just for the record, too, yeah, the the only I I did get a chance to quickly look at it. I do have one comment that we're gonna have to follow up on with the the detention basin, but it's gonna be pretty minor. It's just the way that it's modeled still. And then and then the cul-de-sac, like Mr. Edwards has had stated, so. But that's something that can be handled, that's out of the upland review, and that's something that's gonna be handled through planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Uh, can we have the audience, please? The online, the people online, so I could do for public comment? Thank you. All right, is anybody online like to speak in favor of this application? Unmute yourself and state your name. Anybody online that is opposes that? Yeah. He's trying to, he's trying to unmute himself, right?
He's muted right now.
What, he's muted again?
He's muted.
All right, anybody online that wants to speak in favor of the application? Unmute yourself and state your name. Anybody online that wants to speak about this application in general nature, unmute yourself and state your name?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Michelle Ultra, I'm representing representing Dorothy Ultra, one forty Old Zor Road.
Sorry, sorry, go back, go back again, explain this to me again. Your your who?
Michelle Ultra.
Okay, what's your address?
One forty Old Zor Road, I'm representing my mother, Dorothy.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm really not in favor of the of the twenty five because we're we're pretty close, we're on the downhill side of your upland view and and we're really concerned with with the water and possible contamination of, I mean, everybody on the other side of your upland view is on wells. And we're very concerned about the the disruption of the the water table and the possible contamination of the wells on on Old Zor.
Okay. That that all?
Yep, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still, okay, anybody in the audience today here like to speak in? I know, but I don't think anybody else unmuted himself, stated their name. I thought this guy Scott was unmuting himself, but it changed, so. Anyway, let's try it again. Anybody online want to speak about this application at all? Unmute yourself and state your name. Okay. Uh, anybody in chambers tonight like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Please come up to my, raise your hand. Okay, sir, you can come up to the microphone. You have to come up to the microphone, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Michael Mont, I'm fifty one Downs Road, Stevenson. I really, I came prepared to talk about another another application that's being discussed, and so I don't not really prepared to talk about this. My question before, though, when I really arrived was, is this developer on the same footprint as the nineteen? Couldn't hear anything.
Houses are a lot closer.
Will there be a could be a traffic light or?
First of all, you want to dress us.
I'm sorry.
Dress us and then we'll, okay, the question.
Is there a traffic lane that's coming with this or stop sign or traffic control on on Route one eleven?
I'm pretty sure it's not included in the application. But, you know, I just, no. The answer is no. Is it, all right, thank you. Right. It's not the application. Uh, ma'am, you can come down and state. Yeah, come on down. Microphone. Say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alice, I'm at sixty six Downs Road. I'm also here for the second hearing as well, but I just wanted just to comment that I'm against it. I was driving by there, and it's so depressing, see all the demorstation, and he talks about how demorstation and little to no that was what he used. It'll make it disturbing, so my time, those two just kind of don't really match, because you've shown trees knocked down, all the wildlife, the natural floor and water, it's depressing. So I just find the letter would know that my opinion on that one.
But if you, if you, I'll reiterate, what was in the application, the limited disturbance has not changed. So whether it's whether it's nineteen or it's twenty five, they're gonna cut down all the trees.
Yeah, why wouldn't you?
Just letting you know that they're not, there's not like a change of of like how they're gonna use the limited disturbance.
I totally get that, I'm just saying, there's like a person who recently moved here, like lives here in Brooklyn, like see all the trees come down, it's so depressing. But be up here again, so.
Thank you. Uh, sir, come on down and state your name and address. Records.
Thank you. My name's Eric Church, one twenty six Highland Drive, Monroe. I'm a resident of the High Meadows Complex. When this came up several plans ago and several developers ago, a member of this commission had asked if there would be blasting needed as part of this. And I was wondering if that is still a possibility, probability or a guarantee? What effect that might have on water courses, drainage? And what effect that might have on neighboring homes, including wells and septic fields? Any idea?
I could tell you right now that I'm pretty sure there's no blasting happening within the upland review area. And that's what we're here to discuss and make a our decision on. So there may be other rock removals somewhere else in the site, but if it's not within a hundred feet of the wetlands, if we really, we really have nothing to to do about that.
Okay.
That would be planning and zoning.
I just wanted to make my concerns known.
Thank you.
I'm speaking not only for myself, but several of my neighbors. Thank you.
Uh, anybody here in the public want to speak in favor of this application? Raise your hand. Anybody in the public want to speak, uh, general nature about this application? Raise your hand. Sure, come on down. State your name and address for the record.
William Bermuda, thirty nine Sunrise Terrace. Just based on the the hill and now potentially added traffic, I would really like for there to be consideration for some sort of traffic lighting or just maintenance of that area. Because that hill, and people go fly down that thing. And I don't want to see another like one ten over by Whitney where there seems like a terrible accident like every other week, you know, that just sits back.
Thank you, but just so you know, that's a planning and zoning issue. Thanks for coming up. All right. So I don't think you guys need to say anything else, right?
No, we're also.
I want to make a motion to close this public hearing.
I think it's gonna stay open, right? They still have issues to deal with with town engineer.
I think that James mentioned that he did have concern. Outstanding.
Yeah, it would be my recommendation that it stays open, because there is gonna need to be another minor revision to the plans. And if we close it, then they're not able to submit any more data.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason Edwards for the record. We can submit that as part of our P and Z application, do you or I think?
No, no, because it still needs to be handled through wetlands.
If we're not changing, you're gonna hear the impact of the work in the regulated area, it's still standing up before what?
Uh, that that detain, I believe that the entire detention basin is in the regulated area. So so and and it's it has to do with that. Again, I don't think it's it's not gonna be a substantial change. But there there is the potential for something to change. So so that's why I'm just hesitant to closing.
It's premature to close it. I just thought it was, I didn't know that, I don't know that, I didn't know that issue was unresolved, so, okay.
So we're all even open?
Yeah, we're absolutely open.
Okay, all right.
You'll continue it to which date, to the the twenty eighth?
Are we, we're doing the twen-
The twenty.
The twentieth is supposed to be our our basis speech, but the person that we thought we had has kind of dropped the ball on us. So, right, so we're okay with this? Yeah, it's fine, okay, yeah, moving on to the twentieth, move it to twentieth, well, twenty eighth, yeah. All right. All right, so the next application is I W C twenty twenty three dash eleven file fourteen sixty seven fifteen fifteen thirty six and fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike. Proposal for nine lot subdivision for construction of nine homes, a new road crossing a wetland, Jason to a wetland and water course. Jan's Land Development LLC applicant J Edward Associate LLC represented.
Our our environmental expert, Matt Pop, was unable to make it here tonight. It's gonna, so we would request that we don't hear any, we don't have any testimony on this.
What's?
Yeah, here. All right, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
You hear what I said? Our environmental expert, Matt Pop, is the environmental expert, he did not able to attend them. So we request that hearing be opened and we immediately tabled taking any testimony, continuing.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, yes.
We're, we would like to, if there's no opposition, have the public still comment, because they're here.
That's fine, but we don't, we're not prepared to give any testimony.
Right, right. Okay. All right, so with the application, fifteen thirty six and fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike being tabled to our next meeting, the twenty eighth. But anybody who's sure in the public or online that wants to make a comment on the application can still do that tonight, because you're here and it was publicly noticed. So online, is there anybody who wants to speak in opposition to this application? Unmute yourself and state your name.
Kelly Hengus Corano, nineteen Schultz Road, Monroe, Connecticut.
Just your first name, please.
My name is Kelly.
Kelly, okay, Kelly. Thank you, we're just gonna, I'm just gonna see who's online before I start, so I get all the names written down, okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so just mute yourself and then I'll call on you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else online want to speak in opposition to this application? I'm mute yourself, mute yourself, state your name.
Yes, hi, my name is Kate and I live at seven Schultz Road.
All right, Kate, thank you, mute yourself and then I'll call on you. Anybody else online? I see a hand up, it's more, I never seen that before.
Hi, my name is Melissa, I'm at eighty two Pichug Trail and yeah, that's it.
Thank you, mute yourself, I'll call you, anybody else?
Hello, yes, my name is Midi at thirty nine Downs Road.
I'm sorry, it was mid, Midi?
Yeah. Midi, yep, you got it.
Thank you, mute yourself, I'll call on you. Anybody else online that wants to speak in opposition to this application?
Dozy Brown, twenty two Downs Road.
Thank you, mute yourself, I'll call back, I'll call on you. Anybody else online want to speak in opposition? Unmute yourself, state your name. Anybody online want to speak in favor of this application? Unmute yourself and state your name. Anybody online want to speak on this application in general nature? Mute yourself and state your name. All right, looks like we're ready to proceed. All right, we'll start with the online. Uh, Kelly, unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Hengus Corano, nineteen Schultz Road. I'm a master gardener with the state of Connecticut. And I live in Stevenson. Uh, first of all, I request that the committee have the applicant pay for an independent expert to analyze the entire project for environmental impact. We need to protect our watershed in this area of town. First of all, a little background, our neighborhood is a wildlife corridor in a migratory route all the way from Webb Mountain through our neighborhood and the Stevenson Lambert property, all the way over to the Hunt Club property and beyond in Newtown. Um, we have natural running water and pools for the animals to drink from and endangered animals living on this property. Thus, we really need to protect our watershed. I saw a couple of comments on all of the on all of the paperwork in the meeting agenda. And the fact that someone said that there are no burnout pools is incredulous to me. I have been in, I've lived here since two thousand and seven and. In, I've lived here since two thousand and seven and I've been. In and around all of these properties due to an errant rescue dog that liked to disappear, so I've actually walked all the way up through Crown View. And, um, there is, are many vernal pools. We have a lot of native plants, including skunk cabbage, and that only grows in saturated soils. Um, I personally live in a ninety-year-old stone cottage with an original well. Um, on my property and I, I have some of the best water you'll ever taste and it's completely unfiltered except for through. You know, our soil and substrate. Um, none of us in this area use chemicals on our lawns on purpose. So that we can have clean water to drink as our environment is so closely linked to our clean water. We live symbiotic, symbiotically with nature here because we all drink the same water as the animals, the birds, you know. Um, some of our neighbors have issues with their wells, um, and there are shallow wells here, some of them are eleven feet deep. Um, and they can't even do laundry in their homes as it is due to the refresh rates. Of their wells and, um, I myself have run out of water on, and, and in August or two. Um, so you, we really are living, you know, within nature. Um, I urge the committee to reread page four. Of the letter from J. E. Edwards on February fifth to the town engineer. Uh, it's number thirteen, which states, um, provided deep and percolation test data. And it said a percolation test was not possible. Due to saturated soil conditions as a result of a previous three-inch rainfall. This is the entire point of not building on this property. It is all wetlands. I urge anyone to get permission and walk the property before making any decisions because. I believe that it's erroneously been stated that there are not, you know, areas that are very important to our clean water. As well as the nature in this area. That's all. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Kelly. Kate, unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Kate Johnston and I live at seven Schultz Road in Monroe. Um, my, my property is adjacent to the property that they're trying to build on. I would also like to request that an independent environmental expert be hired to get further information as to how this would impact the environment. According to the Monroe CTGIS system, my well is extremely shallow. Approximately eleven feet deep, so I have great concern for how this build would impact the well water in our area. Wetlands are a natural resource that aids in filtering groundwater, which feeds into the surrounding wells over time. Removing this natural system has a high probability of impacting the neighborhood's drinking water. We receive a lot of runoff from the properties adjacent to and behind us. We have a lot, um, we have experienced a significant amount of erosion on our property as a result of the runoff from the rain, which has. Steadily increased over the last few years as we've seen continuously more wet weather. It's so significant that the ground beside the pavement on Schultz Road has actually started to become carved away. Which is leaving large channels next to the roadway. And if you've been over here on this side, these roads have not actually been here for that long. They're already beginning to crack as a result, they'll start crumbling in the not-too-distant future, and my concern is. That removing all the vegetation and trees from the above referenced property that we're referring to. Would undoubtedly increase further water flow. The roads in our area stay wet for a long time, especially around the bend from Cottage onto Downs. Which has puddles for days after a good storm. Flooding and roadway damage is definitely a concern. Especially since we're usually at the end of the list for plowing. Over the last few months, I've seen a lot of posts and comments from other town residents regarding the negative side effects of their own homes having been built on wetlands. One concern in particular is how their driveways become damaged over time. I imagine that building a large roadway over top of the wetlands would end up costing the town money as they pay to maintain the new roads that are damaged. From being built on top of that saturated soil. I would also like to mention all the wildlife in this area, which depends on the forest to survive. I personally. Have seen hawks, bald eagles, black bears in the first year that I moved here. Owls, foxes, raccoons, tons of different types of birds that I just don't even know the names of. And my other concern is that with all the removal of these trees and the building of these new properties. How much greater is the light pollution issue going to become? As of right now, I can walk out my back door and see beautiful stars and I can see the bats in the summertime. All that is going to go away if we have even more light pollution than we already have as a result of. Everything that's recently changed over at the Stevenson Lumber Yard. And lastly, I would just like to say that I love living in this town. I bought my house when I turned twenty-nine and as soon as I came here and saw all the trees, I knew that this was the right place. I'm not against development in Monroe. I would love to see all kinds of things change and I know that's a planning and zoning issue. Um, but I'd just like to say half of the reason I love living here is due to the wildlife and all of the forests and woodlands that we have around us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kate. All right. Kate, we do have your letter, thank you. Uh, Melissa, unmute yourself and state your name.
Hi, I'm Melissa McKee, I live at eighty-two Pachog Trail. I would like to, um, second or third the request for an independent wetlands review. Um, I've been living here since two thousand and sixteen. And we've had a number of well issues, water issues. Um, we have a really deep well, it's over five hundred feet. And we've experienced frequent water, um, well, sediment in the water, we had to pay thousands of dollars, like. Probably upwards of like seven thousand dollars just to keep, get clean water. And it, we frequently run out of water as well, we've had to frack, our neighbors have had to frack. And so I'm really concerned with an, uh, well, like a densely populated area having. More homes added to that as well as to the impact on the animals. As mentioned, I've personally also seen, um, bald eagles, I've seen black bears in the area. That is going to be developed, uh, too, as well as black bears on my own property. The bobcats, the foxes, all of those, um. Bluebirds and all the fancy songbirds that come out. Lots of salamanders and toads and frogs, the amphibians that would struggle the most with the loss of the vernal pools that definitely exist up there. Uh, maybe not visible right now or when they were doing the original inspection, but there, there are vernal pools back there. And I'm, you know, just want to make it clear that this would be a hardship for those animals. As well as a concern for the waterways that, um, we'll have to be sharing with this property. And that's it.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks.
Midi, unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, guys. My name is Midi, I'm at thirty-nine Downs Road. Please apologize for the background noise. I have kids running all over the place. Um, I do want to, uh, request myself also, uh, an independent. Uh, an independent wetland review. Um. We, we moved here now only two years ago, but my family and I have been enjoying. Uh, the, the little bit of forest we have in our backyard, which is directly adjacent to. The, the project that has been proposed, uh, here tonight. And we are indeed, uh, concerned regarding. The wildlife, first of all, but also regarding the well water as I've understood most of my neighbors. Uh, they've been, they have been, uh, uh. They have been, uh, facing, you know, construction impact with the construction of new homes around. Uh, they've been facing some difficulties with their well. Uh, and the expenses that it has caused them, just like, uh, uh, someone earlier mentioned, a couple thousands of dollar. Uh, for, for, um, intruding, I would say, in, uh, in the, in our wells water. Um, now the wildlife, um, as also some other mentioned, is quite frequent. Whatever it is, uh, bear, eagles, raccoons, bobcats, that's what my, uh, my family and I. Love to, to do, to watch and to enjoy. And with, uh, with that project being done, it's really something that will just go away. And we'll, uh, we'll end up with that light pollution and. The, the, the area of Stevenson is really known for, I wouldn't say for its darkness, don't get me wrong, but. For the, the, the aspect of, uh, of many more trees than there is houses and that's really what we like. So, uh, yes, I also would like to request that wetland review from an independent contractor. And that's all for me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, the name of Suzie, um. Unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Who, Susan? Anybody else online like to speak in opposition of this application? Mute yourself and state your name. All right, well, let's go to, uh, in the chambers tonight. Um, anybody here to speak in opposition to this application, please raise your hand.
Chairman, can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Um. We have no jurisdiction over wells or, or wildlife that isn't directly related to the wetlands. So, so you're not helping us by talking about your wells or traffic or, or woods that are. Or around or, 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 or light pollution that is affecting, um, the quality of your life. It's the wetlands only, okay, so. Please keep your comments based on the wetlands, it'll all go faster and, uh, and that's all we can consider.
Thank you. Good, good, good information. Okay, um. There's a lot of people here. All right, so I'll start on the left, ma'am, you can come up. Uh, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paula Jelly. I live at two ninety Cottage Street. Fifteen sixty-four Monroe Turnpike surrounds me on three sides. I would prefer that nothing be built at fifteen thirty-six and fifty-six forty Monroe Turnpike. But remain woodland and wetlands and put it into a conservation. I respectfully request that an independent expert review the whole project for its environmental impact. There was a previous application in the year two thousand on fifteen thirty-six Monroe Turnpike. That had a conditional approval, which expired in the year two thousand and ten. For two homes rather than four, a shared driveway instead of a road to reduce wetland impact. Why would you consider a road map? And the road originated on fifteen sixty-four to eliminate all impact on wet. The two thousand application needed to grant a conservation easement of six and a half acres. For the west only portion. And two point one-two acres open space for the string wetlands in the eastern form. Please also require applicant to grant a conservation for these areas. For Audrey Wellner at thirty-three Downs Road, there is a spring behind her home. Which creates a swamp the width of her backyard. And forms a stream to twenty-three and twenty-five Downs Road. Through a culvert under Downs Road and into her storm drain. With so Audrey then gives her Giannini's permission to go on the property. And looking at its topographical map and an aerial photograph. It seems like the spring starts at the eastern corner of fifteen thirty-six Monroe Turnpike. In a variable area. This spring must be a water source for him. The applicant needs to mitigate the runoff from this spring to the east for homeowners on Downs Road. The runoff from detention basin number two dumps out on the curb of Cottage Street. But the storm drain is further down Cottage Street in front of my property. Does the water get run out onto the street or is there going to be a culvert or something to get it to the storm drain? This past Sunday, I walked along Monroe Turnpike to save fifteen thirty-six and fifteen sixty-four from the road. There's a lot of water coming off of these properties. And I could see there is dry stone walls. Does the town of Monroe have any protection for the dry stone? And I now realize that is not a question for you. There is no runoff protection from houses number four and five for my property. The footing drains dumps out on the northern portion of my property. Can the footing drain go out a little farther? North to terminate on the other side in the remaining months of fifteen sixty-four? That is what being made of. Thank you for your positive consideration.
Oh, thank you. All right, over here, just, sir, you sort of come up, state your name, your name and address for the record, again.
Yeah, Mark Lamont, I live at fifty-one Downs Road. Been there, my wife and I, they've been, I've been there for twenty-six years. Start by saying that I have a bit of a naturalist background, I was a forester major at the University of Vermont, I read BS. Although I'm not at this point practicing that. Profession, that's my background, I'm an outdoors person. I'll, uh, respect what you said about the wildlife, but I do want to reiterate that that's important and it's important because of the watershed. And the wetlands is on that piece of property, twenty-four acres. But it's a lot of taking a wetland. So we're, we're fifty-one Downs Road, we live at the top of the hill. And I've walked that property. Proposal many times. Because. Because the, we used to be fenced and years ago the town plowed down our, our, our fences, snowplows. So our, we had little shepherds, they go out, they like to chase deer, I had to go find them, I've got that property a lot. I know what's there. And I've walked it recently again too, quite admittedly. The findings of the reports submitted by the proposed developer. As far as their assessment that there are no vernal pools. That there's not a constant water source or water supply are incorrect. I know that firsthand. Been there, I've seen them, I've stood in the muck. And quite honestly, I did just the other day, there are no trespassing signs, but felt it's probably okay for me to go walk there again, so I did, admittedly. There's a lot of stuck cabbage growing up there right now, it's a wetlands, the whole central basin. Of the proposed, right up hill, two parcels, or fifteen thirty-six, before. Are a water basin to wetlands. The water clearly leaks down through the rock layers. The top of Downs Road, where we all, I call it Downs Road Hill, I don't know what the real name of that is. A lot of brick lays down through there and then down makes, it exits the cliffs and the boulders. It kind of at the base Downs Road Hill, where there's a basin. It's where the, the proposed road is supposed to cross. That whole area is wetlands. It will, it'll make a major change, so, so like the others, I request an independent, an independent study. Uh, impacts that can be done there. To determine that because the, the, uh, studies submitted by the developers incorrect. There are vernal pools. That was the one thing I noticed in their study that the definition of a vernal pool is. Temporary water, doesn't have to be standing, but it's temporary water that's that much of the year, it's wet, moist, ground. Habitat for amphibians. But it's wet. There are vernal pools there. These vernal pools are spring fed, that's true, comes out from the rock, Downs Road Hill. Feeds this swamp, large swamp and vernal pools and wetlands right in the middle. That swamp then drains into the creeks that come down off of, off of that hill. Those creeks drain to Cottage Street. What eleven and Downs Road, and there's, there's a serious enough amount of water in those creeks. That the town had built corridors underneath all three roads to accommodate the water flow coming down off that hill, so.
You're, you're over three minutes, so if you could wrap it up. No, if you have to wrap up a point, I'm not going to try to cut you off, but just let you know that, it's been a while.
So, anyway, I request that the independence committee be done as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, on this side of the aisle, anybody else goes in opposition? Speaking in opposition? Yeah, yeah, right. Come on down and speak, uh, state your name and, and. Come on down, speech, state your name and and um address for record.
Mary Beth Corning, fifteen hundred Monroe Turnpike. I just want an independent review of the wetlands over there. Those poor animals, they just need to have their own home. So I'll just give you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe on this side, uh, want to speak in opposition to this application? Ma'am, come on down. State your name and address again, please, for the record.
It's Alison A. Strand sixty six Downs Road. I think I echo the sentiment of everyone else that has spoken, but I'd also like an independent study. Because I know that the laurel, the 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 botanical like they were studied in November and most did. So we're sleeping, you're dormant. So I think that maybe be done this spring or summer would be more optimal, but.
Thank you. Ma'am, come on down.
Hi, uh, my name is Samantha Thieret. I live at five Sunrise Terrace in Monroe. Um, I just wanted to come up and say that my husband and I uh used to live in the Stanford Normal Oak area. One of the reasons we moved up to Monroe is because of Stevenson and Monroe. Um, it is a very special place. If you've ever spent time there, there. I know that we're uh we're supposed to be living in and talking about the wildlife and such. Um, but this is new for me. I've never come to the town hall before. I don't know who who we are supposed to address about wildlife, noise pollution, light pollution, and those kinds of concerns. Maybe that's something I need to look up on my own.
Uh, well, you know, our land review area, we're with anything you're concerned is within a hundred feet of a wetland.
Okay.
Is what you're speaking to us about. And and again, we haven't even seen any testimony yet from the applicant. Um, and there are some maps, but you know, and it generally, you think it has something to do with wetlands? You know, speak and we'll let and then they'll adjust anything as far as if it's a P and Z matter.
Okay, I I have learned tonight to ask P and Z about um the traffic uh impact. But I do want to reiterate the um the special place that it is and all of the animals and flora and fauna and everything that lived there, which I would argue is strictly linked with the wetlands. It's all, it's it's all a symbiotic environment, you know, what what happens to that land affects us, affects the animals, we're all affected. Um, and I just do want, just wanted to make that note. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else in the audience who wants to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody in this audience want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody in the audience want to speak about this application in a general nature? Okay, thank you. Um, so uh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, there was um a citizen who wrote in a letter and asked that if you read into the record. So I was just gonna read it very quickly. Um, I am writing in response to the meeting being held February fourteenth, twenty twenty four concerning the property located at fifteen thirty six and fifteen sixty four Monroe Turnpike, Monroe, Connecticut, considered for development by Jan's Development Co- um Company LLC. My name is Audrey J. Welner. I have lived at thirty three Downs Road for more than fifty plus years. My house was purchased in the early nineteen seventies with a desire to reside in a rural, quiet wooded recreational area. The area remained that way for several years until it was decided to allow a gas station, a major banquet facility to take up residency on Route thirty four. Back then, an occasional tractor trailer truck that had enough fuel could be heard rumbling through the night to slow and turn for the dam. The dark and stillness persisted until the banquet hall took up residency. It, but then they decided not to take anyone's permission to fill the sky with fireworks whenever they had an occasion. Now, because anyone can stop for a tank of gas, Route thirty four is becoming an Indianapolis Speedway. I stood with my neighbor's friend at the post office to watch as a big mother bear desperately tried to get her two cubs across the highway without being killed. What a sad sight. Why do I mention this? Because the area under consideration by your commission is and always has been, has always been a major migratory path for all types of wildlife. It runs from beyond Newtown through Hamilton Road Private Gun Club, behind the former Stevenson Lumber Company through the property under consideration, fifteen thirty six, fifteen sixty former Monroe Turnpike, across my yard through my neighbors to Webb Mountain Park for denning or down to Oak Lake Zor for water. Well, so what you say? And out the other side of your mouth you curse when you slam on the brakes on an icy hill to keep from hitting the numerous deer that are in your way looking for their bedding and paths already bulldozed away for this development. Did you know that a peregrine falcon was rehabit rehabilitated by a former neighbor and re-released into this area? It depends on these woods for food and water. We also have a number of eagles from Chapog Dam area that nest here over the years. We care for our wildlife animals here. Neighbors have paid out of pocket for animals dropped off needing emergency healthcare, food and warm bedding. From a different angle, because of the extremely fragile wetlands environment, there is a struggling flora and fauna ground growth for of endangered species of Princess pine, trout lily and lady slippers being trampled to death and scrapped out by the bulldozers like in your bed. So what does this all have to do with nine houses being built? When I arrived in nineteen seventies, we purchased an above-ground fifteen by thirty swimming pool for our backyard backyard throughout, thought nothing of it. Like most new residents to the area do, they see plenty of water running over the top of the ground, especially after heavy rainfall. Dropped a hose from our well into the pool and filled it to capacity. We had ample water, it flowed three quarters the width of our three-inch overflow pipe on the well all the time. Several years later, we ran an underground tank removal company. A geologist with the company explained why a well on adjacent property should be dug by a screw-driven bore, not a compression pounded rig. He explained that the well company should have used this kind of bore so as not to break all the bedrock and aquifers under the ground. My overflow pipe was now flowing only half the three-inch pipe. Finally, in more recent years, the house right next door to me, thirty nine Downs, question mark, was burnt down. I had no idea what an impact it would be would have on me. I was completely oblivious to the impact and devastation it would create. Developer, workers and officials went about digging a new cellar hole, putting curtain drains and being so nice, only to let me know they set the house further back on the property than where it originally sat, as if that was some type of consideration for my benefit. Everything seemed fine for about four months through the freezing ground in the winter. Then all hell broke loose. The surface groundwater from the thaw came pouring in rivets over the yard, digging deeply into the lawn, filling the driveway with slippery mud and knocking down the embankments that were sold solid for years. I was relieved when the wind spring subsided. I thought my worries were over. Little did I know I was about to go through more. All this mud, silt and sand from the loosened construction soil on the property above filtered underground, down the hill and into my well, and then had to pay out of pocket for a man to come and install new pumps, water holding, including a late the labor for draining and clearing all the bathroom and kitchen fixtures that clogged and are still clogged to this day. I I was naive to think it was finished, but then had to have an appliance repairman flush out my washer and the final expense was to purchase another brand new side-by-side refrigerator, all because the dirt pulled in from the disturbance of the property next door. Try multiplying that by nine houses with foundations, curtain drains, wells, et cetera. This is not flat land, folks. Oh, by the way, the overflow pipe on my well now is down to barely a trickle, maybe one quarter of the three-inch pipe and a heavy incrust. Friends and neighbors from a naive person that trusted what she was told by officials, the house was moved further back on the property so as not to impact your property. When I had to pay for out of pocket involving one cellar hole, a well and a few curtain drains turned out to be an expense that ate the little savings I had and there was no way to recuperate from it. Folks, look out for the future, realize what it what what is apparent on the surface isn't what you can believe. Look to what you will be left with when all the trees are removed and replaced with non-native species to wildlife. The ground is crushed, broken and moved around and the night is light light enough to hide the stars. The alternative you will be is be offered is sewers and storage drinking water that you'll pay out of pocket to hook into, including a yearly additional tax burden. We like our clean drinking well water, low light and quiet wood environment that both human and animals can live in harmony. And that's why we purchased property here. It's been heartbreaking this winter to see deer standing in my yard, not knowing where to bed down because this property has already been disturbed and their bedding is gone. For those new to the area, this has all been discussed in public meeting with the town before. They were made aware of our concerns as property owners to our rights to clean drinking well water, a quiet wooded recreational environment and water infringement protection against our property that they are now oblivious to because additional tax revenue is far more important than human and animal existence. If the board cares not to listen to the voices and history of the residents in the area who are impacted by this proposal and are only concerned with lucrative additional tax burdens, then there are several adjustments to this development plan that need to be included because this proposed development is totally unacceptable to many residents. Thank you for hearing this again, Audrey Welner, thirty three Downs Road, Stevenson, Connecticut, oh, six, four, nine, one. And uh also I would just like to read very quickly into the record, if if you don't mind, the exhibits for this application. Exhibit one, twelve, eleven, twenty-three, application and plan set, application, I'm sorry. Exhibit two, twelve, twenty-one, twenty-three, engineers' comments and bond estimate. Exhibit three, one, three, twenty-four, response to comments by Jason Edwards. Exhibit four, one, two, twenty-four, photos for public hearing signs by Jan's Development. Exhibit five, one, twenty-three, twenty-four, favorable letter from neighbor Greg Benno. Exhibit six, one, twenty-three, twenty-four, comments from Conservation and Water Resources Commission, Conservation Commission. Exhibit seven, one, twenty-six, twenty-four, updated public hearing pictures by Jan's Development. Exhibit eight, one, twenty-six, twenty-four, certified mail receipts by Jan's Development. Exhibit nine, two, five, twenty-four, response to engineer's comments and advised plans by Jason Edwards. Exhibit ten, two, eight, twenty-four, letter from concerned neighbor Audrey Welner. Exhibit eleven, two, eight, twenty-four, letter from concerned neighbor Paula Jelly. Exhibit twelve, two, twenty-four, letter from concerned neighbor Kate Bartholomew.
All right, um, so this uh this application has been tabled to our next meeting on the twenty eighth of February. Correct, are we ready?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to just ask if the commission would like to schedule a site walk right now in anticipation of it being needed for the rest of the.
Well, uh, okay, so are you guys prepared for it?
There's snow on the ground though, so.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking today too. Like it probably was not, you know, it probably won't be fun plus hard to show details uh with snow on the road.
I mean, you're on the wild, you're walking, you're staying for that second, I can't control the snow.
Or you could schedule the next public hearing if you want to schedule it at the next public hearing for when.
I mean, if it was, no, I would have liked to set it up for the Saturday, but the uh but you don't have any stakings yet.
We don't have a staking.
Uh, all right, so then let's uh. We got wood, well, riots on here, but Saturday works for you guys?
This Saturday doesn't, but any other Saturday.
I just wonder if we try to do it before.
And he had stated that he wanted to do a site visit on this property.
Well, he stated that.
I know, but Ryan said it last.
Well, we all, yeah, I think that's a great other site walk. Great, but it was a matter of, it snowed and this Saturday wasn't, would have been good for me, but anyways, um, what do you guys think next? You know, you want to do it before it opens? Do you want to do it after it opens?
I would think we should do it after so we can.
Typically, that's what happens.
So we can hear what he has to say.
We thought you were gonna open it tonight, right? So give us all the testimony, the maps, that's why I was gonna try to get a sketch, you know, try to set up for the Saturday because then it would just move this thing along faster. But that's why I'm thinking.
We should hear what he has to say first and like.
Yeah, I agree. So we're not, we'll read to pick up the site walk discussion on the twenty eighth. Um, all right, so we're ready to can.
Table two.
February twenty eighth. Um, all right.
Again, are we gonna discuss the the request for the professional review?
No, it's not, it's not open yet. We haven't had that, we haven't had the testimony yet. We can't request review without them first.
If we don't, if we don't start the process.
Yeah, I, you opened the public hearing.
Yeah.
They chose not to present. You have seen the material.
So, oh, we can't.
If you would like to discuss an independent study, I agree, I think.
And we gotta do it. We're gonna do it, we gotta do it, so we have, we have time.
They chose not to present and in the efforts of time, it will take some time to coordinate. True.
Uh, motion there or?
Well, that goes through you guys, right? Because you have to put out the.
Majority vote, so I'll make a motion that we hire, hire or get proposals from a third party, for a third-party review.
Second, second by motion from Commissioner Stewart, second from Commissioner Lindstrom, all favor.
Aye.
Thanks. It's true. Thank you, guys, keeping this thing. All right. Now, to finally, introduction reports, none. Liberation session, I completed hearings, none. And I didn't see agent activity reports, agent approvals, IAA, twenty twenty-three, that's working file fourteen fifty-eight, sixty-six, East East Lordville, gravel drive with expanded beyond approved plans discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, as I normally do, as agent approvals come and come on to my desk, I process them and um just tell you about them at the meeting as time allows. Um, very quickly, this is one that I issued um for um that has an easement going across someone else's property. It's fifteen foot wide easement. There was a ten-foot wide gravel driveway that went to the rear property. And um the applicant lived in the rear of sixty sixty um East Village Road and wanted to re-gravel and kind of buttress up their driveway. Um, and in the app, in the approval, I gave you copies of all of it, but basically says you're you're just replacing it in existing spot. Um, what actually happened was they kind of expanded to the fifteen-foot limit of their easement. Um, it, I'm discussing it with you because it, they did not comply with it. And does the commission think that that's something that needs some kind of a remedy? It's it's not paving, it's not impervious surface. So I'm not sure just if the commission is is comfortable with that.
What is, so you're saying that in the easement language, it says.
Um, it's not the easement language and the the approval that I gave, it was strictly to replace what was existing. There was no expansion of the driveway proposed. Uh, or and I and or approved.
I just want to make sure I understand what you said. You said that it was, they were, they had permission for fif- ten feet wide?
To replace existing that was ten feet wide in a fifteen-foot wide.
What is the legal description of the width of their gra- of their gravel drive?
There, there's no legal description that I know of. I didn't read.
Even if it's fifteen.
The easement is fifteen feet wide and the drive, and the gravel drive was ten feet wide inside of that. And I just gave them permission to replace what was existing in a ten-foot wide easement. And the ten-foot wide gravel drive existing inside that fifteen-foot wide easement. Um, they had it staked by the surveyor to make sure that they knew where the easement was. And then from what I can tell from, you know, inspecting it, they've expanded.
Is there some sort of regulation that says they aren't supposed to go that wide?
I don't, I I mean, as as far as the wetlands go, no, but it's something that they didn't comply with. So if the commission thinks that that's something that needs to be remedied, uh, I think that should be discussed. If you don't think it's a big deal, if you just doesn't have an issue with it, then I would just.
Yeah, they just in a upper area, like where?
It's an enough view area. So so the, so the, the thing is that it goes across someone else's property. So they are only working within that fifteen-foot wide easement. I did have them have a so- a soil scientist flag the wetlands that are on their property as soon as it gets onto their property so you can tell where it is. So I don't know exactly where the the wetlands are in relation to their, to their fifteen-foot wide easement. I know, but I mean, as you can see in the pictures, it's all stabilized, it's grass and there's shrub.
I just want, when I'm, when I'm fifty feet.
No, not fifty, I would say closer than that.
Okay.
What I want to know is that what are they allowed to do within the fifteen feet?
Right.
So are they allowed to use the fifteen feet as a driveway?
It's their, it's their easement.
It's their easement, but is the restriction to the width of the gravel driveway in the, in the language.
I didn't look, I didn't look in the easement. I don't, in on the actual wording, I didn't look in that, but that's, the thing is, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, the the easement is just for a, an access easement. Um, that's all that's called out in the easement. Um, there's no delineation of width in terms of what can be installed or types of material to be installed. Um, the reason why it was, you know, approved at a staff level was because there was already a ten-foot wide gravel driveway. And the indication was they were, they just wanted to replace it with gravel. So didn't feel that it needed to go through all the motions in terms of getting uh the commission involved. However, they now expanded upon their their disturbance or the driveway width um from what was existing based upon all the documentation that they submitted. So that, that's where the the hesitation is, is because now they're technically clo- they are close to wetlands. Um, so it it comes into play, like now they're doing additional work aside from just ripping up and replacing in kind.
There is an application. There was an application.
They came in for an agent approval, administrative.
Administrative one, and you, there was a written transfer of. Administrative one, and you, there was a written transfer of permit.
Yeah, they got, they got a permit from, uh, from staff, from me.
From you.
To be able to just replace what was existing that was ten feet wide.
It said ten feet wide was the minimum, was the maximum?
Yes, because that was, that was what was existing prior, and that we had that conversation that they were going to just replace what was existing. And based on the plans that were submitted, it shows fifteen foot wide easement, ten foot wide gravel drive. I have a, I can get a scale and measure it.
So.
Is there any reason why if they submitted a plan of expanding it, that there would be a restriction on that? Or would you have said it needs to go through us?
I would have come to you for, for, um, a question first to see if, you know, if that would be something that you guys wanted to look at and then go from there. But since it was replacing existing location, I didn't do that.
So, so the fact that we thought it was going to be ten, it ended up twelve, is the issue, not the fact that it, whatever the number is, it's not what we expected it to be. Now the, now the question is.
Do we have a problem with that?
Is that, is that a big deal? It's, it's not that it's a paved driveway, it's gravel, so water's going through it anyway. So, okay, maybe things went this way when they should have went that way. Is it an issue?
I don't have a problem.
I, I don't personally have a problem because it's. It's gravel, I mean.
Right, that's why, that's why I came. If you, if you don't, then you don't.
We want to say, hey, shame on you, you should have told us what you really wanted to do, we would have approved it, fine, but I don't know, you look like you want to say something, so go ahead.
No, I just, uh, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we hear from them before we make a decision right here?
All right, before, but why, like, again, I want to, they didn't, they didn't go, they stayed within their easement, correct? Is that what you feel?
That's my understanding, yes, with the stakes, yes.
So, so they, so they may have had at one point the right to use the whole easement.
They probably still do.
They still do.
Yeah.
Right, meaning like, and well, like, as, how do we know that, like, over twenty or thirty years, like, the edges didn't grow in and it looked like it was ten, but realistically it was fifteen?
The plan submitted is what I went by.
Okay.
And what was existing, so, and for, just as far as the wetlands go, if it's, if it's, if it's pervious surface and that's not a problem, that's fine.
Right, so, all right, well, we're here.
Right, that same, state your name and address for the record.
John Ignatowski, sixty six East Village Road. Um, we, we put an application for permit, there was, it didn't specify the size and width that was, that we've got to work with. When Cheryl came out and when she had asked us verbally to follow the footprint. So I had Burden's Construction come out to the contractor, they laid a string along the line, uh, the existing driveway line. And asked me if that was the footprint, and I says, I agreed with them, yes. So they followed that line. It was, it was more than ten foot wide, that driveway was, the driveway is seventy years old, it's been plowed, we've been driving around boulders. Reason we did this is because of the rocks are popping through. We've been driving around that thing all over the place.
Listen, I, maybe it was miscommunication, but when I issued the permit, it said in existence. Then, so this plan, this plan that has my, has my stamp on it, shows two lines on each side. It shows a ten foot gravel, gravel drive that's unmeasured because it's a scale, and then it shows the dotted lines on the outside, which are the, the easement line. So this planet that we have here that shows your wetland mark, markers that you guys graciously do there, it shows a ten foot wide gravel drive inside of a fifteen foot wide easement, specifically on this plan. It's a scaled plan, so I measured it. One inch equals thirty. This is one inch equals thirty map that, that you, you submitted that has the wetland line on it.
And our application doesn't stay, state, in fact, you said you recommend is number five, and it just says that we're going to install re. Remove gravel and sub base on existing driveway, install new practice.
That means existing driveway, right, and the plan that was approved shows a ten foot wide gravel drive.
This is before and this is after, I mean, you can see the stakes are further away on both pictures, before and after. Can I give you this?
Yeah, I'm just bringing it, it's fine, we'll take a look. Just throw my name on the ground.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lindstrom, but this is, you can see the stakes.
Yeah.
See it from here? Oh, by the shed, see the stakes? And see the stakes, this shed is still there, but the stakes are that far away. We didn't use the whole thing.
Yeah.
On either side. And the stakes are on the other side of the silk fence.
If you, if you, if it's not an issue, it's not an issue, but I wanted to bring it to you because it, it went beyond the agent approval, Michael.
Realistically, if no one went out there and actually put a tape measure across the driveway, because if they had, you know, if the, if this plan, this plan right here was, was drawn for this project. It's an adequate current conditions or just something?
Submitted it because it had the wetland markers on it and it showed the, the gravel driveway and it scaled and.
My question is, when was this, when was this done? Being like, the, being that, so what I'm trying to say is that if their gravel driveway, it is drawn in at ten, but over thirty years, gravel spread to, to fourteen. You know what I mean? Like, if this was like a proposed drawing, for the beginning, I don't know what the date, what's the date on this map? So I'm just saying, just we'll see where all the pot potential errors could have caused, so we all feel a little better. If this map is an older map, right, and this is a proposed ten foot driveway, but over the years of plowing and everything else, that gravel had spread to fourteen? And, and the wording was to use the existing footprint. You know what I mean? Without having an actual assessment of what was there before the project started.
It had been built wire and the.
Yeah, it could have been mill wired, the gravel could have spread, migrated over the years.
What, what, it is what, it is what it is right now.
Yeah, so the question is, let's move on. Yeah, exactly.
If you don't have an issue with it, then you don't have an issue, so that's what I need to know.
So. I want to respect you.
But Cheryl, thank you.
No, I mean.
Thank you for bringing it. Thank you, okay, great, so.
That's the point. He said, I respect what, what, what you're saying, and, and you want to stick to the letter of the law, and, and I hope it doesn't teach you a lesson, not to come to us. I really, I don't know what to do. I, I get it, we have no grounds to hold on literally.
Make a motion, what, what we have to do?
Uh, just let me know you're okay with it.
We're okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
You're okay?
Okay, you're okay?
I think it stinks. I, I have no grounds to, uh, to do anything except say that, um, I think, I think, I think you should have addressed to the, uh, to the owners and said, we're going to increase it a little bit. Just be nice, uh, nice to be nice to your neighbors, that's what I think. And I think you, you should be ashamed that you didn't do that.
We did do that.
Well, first of all, they have a fifteen foot.
I, I get it.
So they didn't violate the neighbor.
Right, I get it, but they had a ten.
If it's going over the fifteen foot. It's be like, just real, that's all I'm trying to do.
No, I get it, but it, but it, be real, it's clearly wider than it was.
I can't, I can't tell.
Well.
I can't tell, I can't tell if that's, if that's grass growing into six inches or eight inches of the gravel on the side. If I was there before it started, I would be able to say confidently what I think happened. But if they come along with a grader and they scrape off the grass, and all of a sudden, there's, there's gravel under six inches of grass or a foot of grass on the edges, which is very common, I see it all the time. As soon as they put the first pass of a grader over it, you now have fourteen feet of gravel. Right?
I'm a.
I'm just saying, that's, I'm just saying that's could have, I'm not saying that's what happened. I'm saying that's what could have reasonably happened here.
But that, that is there now, that is true. The gravel exceeds past fifteen foot driveway, it's biased down by the road.
I'm not seeking to change anything, I just, I'm a proponent of we need to be nice to each other and especially work with our neighbors, it should never have come to this.
Motion.
But you should, you should have discussed it with the, with, uh, the folks who live, um.
Sixteen.
That's Susie and Clifford, uh, Casal, I, I, I'm just sorry that you didn't, and I, so. But they're not here tonight, so, yeah, I, I, I understand. We have no grounds to stand on, I just, I don't like it.
So, three of us don't have an issue, you do or do not?
I just would abstain, I, I don't have, I can't, I can't say anything, so I'm just, I'll just shut up.
You're good.
Thanks.
You're good. Okay, we're all set.
So we're going for mine knowledge, it's the actionable, is there any actionable item that needs to occur?
I would prefer to have a vote, so just since it's on the agenda, if you don't mind.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
All right, so. Just no action to be taken, no further action, and the commission is.
To make a motion to, uh, dismiss this, I don't know, what do we call this? Uh, concern?
Just even a vote of no concern.
Clarification. So, so make a motion that we're not concerned.
To the vote of no concern.
We got a motion for dismissal.
For me.
Dismissed of no concern, second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart, all in favor? Uh, anybody opposed? Any abstaining?
It would be me.
All right, three, 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 uh, in favor, one abstention, um, the first time we've ever had a case.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't, I don't, I, you know, it's not the way.
So, do they need anything to close out or everything is good? Like, is there?
No, I'm going to make a note to the file based on what happened tonight and modify the plans accordingly, and that'll.
There's nothing else that needs to get issued to them. For, okay.
It'll be in the file.
Can I ask a question? If, I still, we would love to aid it.
Oh, let's not go.
And we'd also have to have the wetlands flagged.
Right.
On, off your, off your property, so that would have.
Way out, right.
Absolutely, yeah, that's a whole nother animal, um, and.
Or is it something that we just don't do?
It's your decision.
You can make an application to do it, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
Happens all the time, but anytime someone's paving in an upland review area, they have to get a way. Especially, especially if it's new. Right, so you're changing from impervious to pervy, I mean, from pervious to impervious, there might be some things that I don't have the knowledge to comment on that might come into play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming tonight, Duff.
Uh, moving along, IAA twenty twenty three dash seventeen, file fourteen sixty eight, thirty four Oakmont Trail, repair a perimeter foot section of existing brief, three, thirteen foot wide gravel drive adjacent to the wetland. Consisting of mil- filling holes, leveling and compaction.
I just wanted to let you know that I issued that permit, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Okay. Enforcement, IWD twenty twenty three dash zero seven, file fourteen fifty three, twenty seven Maple Drive, status update.
So, um, if, Mr. Commissioners, basically this was an app, uh, an enforcement, um, against, um, an owner at twenty seven Maple Drive. Um, there was an existing driveway going in and there were a couple trees cut down, and there was a few piles of large logs and an excavator within a land review area. Um, the applicant, I mean, sorry, the owner said he was going to come in and come in with an application to develop. He ended up not doing that, here moved all the logs, and then the area where the, a couple trees were taken down by the side of a water course, have, it's reestablished. So I just thought I would close the file, but I wanted to let you know the status of it. That's what's going on with that.
All right, permitted uses as of right, IPU dash twenty twenty four zero one, file fourteen seventy sixty eight Judd Road, installation of a solar powered rear gate. Position measurement system across Stephanie Dam, the crane wire company owner, Egan Bond, Matthew Reagan, applicant representative. So this is actually, the address is Judd Road, but this thing is installed off of Route twenty five, right? That little parking area?
Yeah, yeah.
I saw it, I'm looking at this phone, Judd Road.
Yeah.
There's nothing on Judd Road.
The actual, like, bail, bail.
The address for the property.
But, yes.
Right, and I, but I remember like, thinking to myself, and then when I read it closely, what they put in, I'm like, wait, I saw that, but it's on twenty five.
This would need a vote, uh, just to, just to approve it as an IPU, and we can just sign it, just if, if you are so inclined.
Um, do you remember what I said?
I submitted to them what you submitted to us, so, if they want them, you know.
You can do this in five minutes and we'll swear that you're here for an hour now.
Yeah, no worries.
Yeah, if you take ten minutes, I'm voting against it.
Okay. Real quickly, um, I have a short presentation here. Uh, so this is for the Stephanie Dam stream flow release. Just some background, uh, so the Connecticut General Assembly passed Public Act zero five one four two, uh, which required that, uh, Connecticut deep to update standards for maintaining minimum flows of rivers and streams. Um, reason being is to balance river and stream ecology and wildlife recreation, also providing health, food control, industry, public utilities and so forth. Uh, Connecticut stream flow standards and regulations were adopted in twenty eleven, um, as part of this aquarium, um, as you mentioned, that aquarium water company is the client, um. And also the property owner of, uh, Stephanie Dam, uh, aquarium must submit stream flow release plan by March twenty six, twenty twenty eight, to begin the new stream flow release on the following year. Uh, the current stream flow release for the dam is two hundred and fifty five gallons per minute. Sorry, um, so just more background about the actual dam, uh, there's a primary spillway, which you can see on the left, and then auxiliary spillway, you can see on the right. Aquarium currently adjusts the rear gate manually, and there's no way to measure the flow over the spillway or the diversion. So a new rear gate is necessary to measure the flow through the rear gate to meet the required stream flow release as part of the plan that will be adopted. So wetland delineation was performed, um, last year, yeah, by a time body qualified soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, uh, one, uh, stream, uh, one water course and four wetlands were delineated. Uh, as you can see here, so was the upland review area for the wetlands, and also the, uh, additional bumper for the west branch of Colonic River is also, uh, noted in, uh, red there. So the proposed activity is to install a solar powered water level and rear gate measurement system at the diversion structure, so that's the auxiliary, uh, diversion. And a buried conduit encasing concrete would run along the toe of the primary spillway for remote indication, so that the percentage of the gate that's open or closed can be controlled remotely. Because right now it's being controlled manually.
Can I speak question?
Yes.
Quick, uh, so that's a conduit going out to the gate?
Uh, so, yes, so that's going to be a conduit at the toe slope, you'll see it on the plans, that basically it'll follow the tote slope of the, it's just.
My question is, it's solar, I can't just signal be.
You know, unfortunately, I can't tell you that. I, I think that it's, it's solar powered, but communication has to have.
Wired, so why not just make it like?
I, you know?
Maintain the flow, okay?
I don't, I don't, I don't, yeah. Well, also because again, it has to be like operated, I guess, maybe on cloudy days, maybe that's one of the reasons. Uh, so here's the site plan, where you could see, uh, the location of the buried conduit below the spillway going to, uh, the diversion structure on the left. Uh, you could also see on the site plan, uh, temporary confor dam, so it'll be installed, uh, on the downstream side of the dam to allow work in the dry. So regulated activities are three thousand three hundred and seventy five square feet of the west branch of Colonic River will be temporarily impacted by that confor dam working in dry conditions. Uh, for the actual buried conduit in place, uh, in concrete, uh, that will result in three hundred and fifty square feet, seven cubic yards of permanent fill. And also there will be clearing and rubbing of wet vegetation and trees within twenty five feet of the dam for this work to occur. With that, are there any questions?
Is there something already installed out there?
Uh, so, it's, it's manual, yeah, so there's a manual rear gate, there is a rear gate there.
But there's nothing that's not new?
I don't think it's new, yes, so.
I saw something there like last week.
Really?
Like at that little gate, that little break in dam, right?
Yeah, I, I, I haven't seen out there, um, so photos that are in the, um, application are from last year, so those are the most recent photos that I have, uh. No idea what, uh, this additional.
Playing tricks on me.
Yeah. Like a fish ladder or wasn't the rear itself?
Well, it's like, I know where that break is in the concrete wall, like.
Right.
Usually has a piece of wood or something.
Yes, yes.
Is there, is there a fish liner, or is there?
Is there, I'm sorry?
Is there access for fish? Is DP Fisheries?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, uh, it might be in the photo log.
Excuse me?
It might be in the photo log and the application. But part of this, a stream flow release is to, uh, help with, uh, fish during migratory periods. You know, the Q ten bio period, uh, that's the determination factor for the stream flow release.
Yeah. I would make a motion that we make a jurisdictional ruling, this is a, as of right. I would make a motion that we make a jurisdictional ruling. This is a, as of right.
Just.
Uh, a motion to pause a jurisdictional ruling at the right. Hold this second.
Right.
Second by commis-, uh, motion by Commissioner Stewart, the second by Commissioner Lynch, in all favor. All right, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I P U twenty twenty-three dash zero two, file fourteen thirty, since town Monroe Beaver Dam removal made in Guskey Pond, update on progress from town engineer. James?
Yeah, so, um, basically just, uh, status update is the sheet pilings were in, they're, they're working how we intended. Um, I went through, um, as much historical maps and plans as I could to determine the, um, historical elevation for Guskey Pond. Set, set a weir at that height. So now we're maintaining at that height. And, um, the only time that the residents are experiencing the, the water elevation that they currently were. Uh, surprisingly, like right after everything was installed, we got hit by another five hundred year storm. And, uh, thank God we drained the water when we did, because the water was all the way down and it came right back up to the top of the Beaver Dam. And even started sp- overtopping that. So if the water was there, the people downstream would have gotten hit very, very hard. Um. At the moment, I am keeping, so, so there does not appear to be beaver activity in this area at the moment. So what I'm doing is I'm leaving the sheet piling in as well as the Beaver Dam. Um, in order to, to maintain that water elevation. Um, because the, the, um, the structure downgrade. From this Beaver Dam that used to restrict the flow of water has completely collapsed over the years. So I'm in the process of trying to, um, rebuild that. Because otherwise we will have no flood control, um, for the people downstream. And, um, however, this is not going to be a quick process. Um, I've been doing a lot of homework in terms of, um, reg-, like who's jurisdiction is it under? Who do I have to apply through? Um, th- this is going to be kind of significant for the town of Monroe. So, um, it's not something I expect to happen even within the next year. Um, but eventually, when it does, obviously this commission will, will be made aware, because again, it's gonna have wetland impacts. But the benefit to leaving what we have in is it gives us flood control to construct or modify the, what's, what's currently downstream. So it allows us to drop the water just below it so that then we can work. And then, then the hope would be to get rid of that once we can.
What, why would they, why would we even take the sheet pie out at all? Because if they, if, you know, over some period of time, the beaver build another dam. You have forever now this way to slowly control the outflow of the, you know, the dam. What?
There, there is, there is that thought. Um, but I, I'm, I'm trying to take things one step at a time. And right now it's reconstructing or rebuilding that lower, um, that lower flood control. Um, then once we're there, then that's when the conversation's gonna be had, um, internally and amongst all of us. Um, in terms of how we want to handle, handle the sheet pilings.
Anybody been taking pictures along the way, just so we can kind of see more during after?
Uh, I do have, I do have some pictures. Yep. And I'm more than happy to, to submit them, uh, to you.
Yeah, it's fine. Well, since they just at some point, so we can kind of see with some of the progressions.
I have some pictures. Well, so James, what is the, uh, do we know?
How much this control is supposed to, how much volume is supposed to control? Like.
So, so the one thing I have, th- there's not a lot of information on how much it's supposed to release. Um, but again, what I have is, you know, historical, uh, water elevations. So the, the thing would be to maintain those first and then also be able to control the release of any additional water that does come into the pond. Um, over time, without substantially flooding all the properties that, that have also been there that are adjacent to it.
So that has, so that pond has a storage capacity to it?
Yes, yes. Yep, that's pond, the pond has and always had storage capacity. So, um.
But then I had to release it after storm over a certain period of time.
Correct, correct. And, and, and that's the key is to make sure that we can still have control over the release of it. Um, and it will subside back. Cause with the Beaver Dam, it, it was not able to subside and stayed, you know, two feet higher than, than what it currently is. Um, so if any of you drive by, um, you could take a look and see where we have the weir elevation. And look at that compared to the top of the Beaver Dam. That, that's how much water has been dropped and, and that's pretty much how much flood storage we're maintaining right now too. So we're really.
That was the original intention of that, of that structure?
It. Yep, it did. Well, I, I don't think that was the original intention, but there was actually a manual controlled gate valve inside of it. As well as, I think it was a twenty-four inch pipe, um, in terms of what was passing the water through. And then it had, I believe in like an overflow over the top of that, one of the twenty.
So it always had an open twenty-four inch pipe at the bottom.
Wi- wi- with a gate valve, yes. Um, but who knows what, how it was truly utilized from the sixties and seventies. Um, I don't have any records of that.
Is there, are there any, are there any of those anywhere else in town?
Um, uh, I have no idea, but I am uncovering more and more information every day. So.
I mean, at, at public works, do they have to go out and maintain any other, uh, retain, you know, retention release ponds anywhere in town?
There, there are no, no, it, that's not on any standard yearly maintenance that D P W does. So again.
But it should be, it should be known if they exist, right?
It should be. It doesn't mean.
They would have to work. They would have to be working in order to do the job.
Correct. Um, the problem is, is who knows truly what has happened before I, I, I joined the town and, and who was actually, you know, if they paid attention. So.
Besides Monroe Sun.
Yeah.
That's where I got some information from. Thank you.
All right. So, thanks for the update.
Um, before Cheryl leaves, is there anything related to wetlands?
No, but, but we, we commented at Guskey Pond, it, we appreciated them bringing it to us, even though it's under, carried under the general permit. You read a portion of the, of the, you, you, when we talked about, hey, we, we do want to know about certain activities. Obviously, emergency activities have to happen. You remember this conversation?
Yeah, yeah.
So is there anything before you leave that we, that should happen to, you know, I don't know, is there a future change that we should, or addition to the, to the regulations? Should help stipify what, stipulate what James and you come to us with?
I think most of the inland wetland regs are based on state statute.
Right.
So, um, I don't have anything particular, um, yeah, uh, coming from staff, I don't have anything like outstanding that I would say this really needs to be done. It's a big hole or something that's, you know, of major.
I, I, I think historically the biggest issue is interdepartmental, uh, communication. And, and, and that's, that's, it's not necessarily something that would be, um, statute wise, it's more of just.
I want to bring it up before Cheryl left.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Before Cheryl left, I just want to make it clear, we appreciate you bringing Guskey Pond to us before it happened, so that we could have at least, you know, done what we did and, you know, understand it. I have visited a number of times. You did a great job. Thank you, James.
So, all right, um, we're all set?
That one, yep.
All right, correspondence eighteen Robin Lane, aquatic pesticide application.
Right, so. So we, uh, basically, um, the commission, uh, inland wetlands commission, this commission had, uh, previously been notified about it. Um, it was a three-year permit back in twenty eighteen. So this, this, this property has history of getting three-year permits from the state. Um, technically, this commission doesn't have any jurisdiction to prohibit the permit being issued under the inland water courses act. Um, I talked to, um.
It's a residence?
It's a residence, yeah. And then they have the pond behind their property, is my understanding. Um, so I had talked to, I think it's Aiden, I think it's Aiden Florio, yes, Aiden Florio from Deep Pesticide Program. Um, on the fifth of November. And basically he said that the application is his Q, is in his QB process, the property is in N D, N D B area. And therefore he needs a, a report from N D B prior to the permit issuance. Then he's gonna issue it and then, I, how, I don't know how this works, but the basically after he issues it, we can set, we get notified, you guys get notified. And you can at that time give comment to them post-permit. Um, and then as far as the wildlife, the, um, aquatic species and, and the impacts to them. Um, that's all followed up through N D B. They have their own way to check to see the success and impacts to the wetlands, um, I mean, to the species. So it's more, it's more of a, a notification.
Right.
They weren't, and I checked the old minutes from twenty eighteen, it just says notification correspondence generally in the minutes and in the agenda. Um, so it was just kind of like letting you know that that was happening. So, did the same.
Well, I recognize, uh, I don't know why she's hands, she got her hands signal out, but.
Yeah, she's from the Conservation Commission, Barbara Thomas. Yep.
Right. So Barbie, why don't you interview yourself and let us know what you're. What you're.
Okay, actually, no, I, I hit that by mistake. I apologize. Sorry.
All right. Thanks.
I do have a question related to this.
Hold on. All right, um, for this fourteen Robin Lane?
Yeah.
Right. What's your question?
Okay, so, uh, in, in the packet was, uh, I guess they're specifying solitude, lake management is gonna do the work. We all understand how important it is to do it correctly. They're using quite a lot of herbicides that they, they talk here and there's, there's a, there's a number of, uh, uh. Species that are state special concern in the area. Um, and they're, they were subject to, they violated the law a couple of times. Yeah, the record is here. And, and this, I, I'm just.
The company.
Yeah.
Yeah, the company.
So I, 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 I don't, I, you say, well, there's nothing to do with it, but, but if they, if they fail.
On this address, they violated the law?
This is.
This company that's going to do the work.
Yes, yeah.
I would, I want to say cited, I don't want to use the wrong wording, but in there it does say that they, um, had some, I don't know, maybe infractions.
Citation on eighteen Robin Lane?
No, not on eighteen Robin Lane.
The company that's.
Okay, so.
Do the pesticide.
Right.
Notification.
So I understand. So, but their, but their license is still standing.
That's my understanding. It's, again, it's, it's, it's before.
I understand what you're saying.
It's a deep pesticide program.
Why was this included for us or is it just part of the?
I, I got it, uh, um, as, as we were being notified and I let you, I was notifying you that the state is reviewing it, deep pesticide program. It, it falls under them, under the inland water courses act.
That was in the, in the sheet.
Yeah. So just FYI to the commissioners, uh, the, the home is about a hundred and twenty, uh, is about, uh, two hundred and fifty feet from Herd's Brook. Besides the wetlands, they're two hundred and fifty feet from Herd's Brook. We could expand the upper wetland review area per the state if we decided to. I, I, I'm concerned because we're talking right near Mastick High School. Mastick High School is seventy-five feet, just a little downstream of this brook. This house is, uh, uh, five hundred feet to Bennett Field, Mastick High School Field. So we're talking close proximity to a lot of students and the application of pesticides. And this is not necessarily a person who's held up the law in the past. So I'm just wondering, I, I see what you say, but you know, when I read this, I said, wow, this, this concerns me. They, they were cited in New York, they were cited in Connect-, in Connecticut, uh, by deep. Uh, I, I don't know that, uh, it was, you know, for our digestion, for our bruisal, was part of this, uh, notification? I, I don't know what to do with it. I, I.
Well, I think that, that, that Cheryl said, once they, when and if they approve the permit, then we'll have an opportunity to comment on it.
Send comments at that time. Yes, they're gonna notify us when, when the permit's issued and then we have a chance to comment. Commission can comment if they so choose and the, but you don't have the right to prohibit it.
I get it.
But you can comment at that time, when, whenever that.
They'll give thirty-eight comments, probably, and then you can comment and then they look at your comments and then adjust or, or not.
No, I, I just would point out the proximity to the high school and other people's residences. I just, you know.
That's, those are some comments.
Right. So Kathleen, will you be letting us know about that time or?
It depends on when that happens. So if it's a month, month and a half from now, who knows how long state, the state will take to, to review it and approve it. And they have to get.
They laugh, they laugh their permit.
Yeah, no.
So it's not a renewal to new application.
Yeah, someone will be there. It'll get sent to the office and someone will be able to.
So, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm assuming you're gonna fill in some of the roles that Cheryl's.
Roles, however, we, so.
I, I get it.
Tonight is Cheryl's last meeting.
Yes.
So we do want to thank Cheryl for her time in the last year and her just getting her head deep into everything that's here and really doing wonderful thing. And personally for myself, because I've only been here for two months and she has helped bridge that gap as I've learned a lot of new things. Um, we have, however, hired a new zoning enforcement officer, um, and wetland enforcement officer, he will be starting at the beginning of March. Um, so I will help with that transition period and I won't completely leave him, um, to flounder on his own. Um, but we'll be doing that. So it will be, he or I will, uh, yeah, will be able to take care of this and, and help bring that onto the agenda. So yes.
It's not the agent. We're still looking for.
At, at the moment, it's gonna be a combined.
Right, but there's still another position to fill. That's not through.
Not as of yet.
Right.
We, it, if that does occur, there's still some town approvals that has to happen to be able to make that to be a, 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 approved position. So at the moment is a combined commission. He will be filling both those roles.
Speaking of filling roles, what about empty commissioner?
So, any update? Uh, we have one that was. I thought I heard we had one sworn in, but maybe not yet.
Terry was looking into it last I talked to him.
So we had, so, so RTC has approved.
Somebody.
Somebody for the Rs. But I don't think that they got through the, I don't think that town council has voted on it. Is that correct?
I don't think so, but I, I'm not sure.
So then they got this, then they get sworn in. So it's been approved by RTC, the town council, as far as I know, has not acted on it yet. And then from there, there's a swearing in.
That's one. What about?
The other one, I believe, was. Approved by council. I don't know. I, I heard, I don't know the update, but there is, there's supposed to be two more people coming, the way I understand.
I can, I, yeah, I can look into it.
Right. Um, I think it's, I think the D is further along than the R. Uh, I don't know the name. I don't have a name. I haven't, so the only thing I know about the person that's supposed to come in on our side, on our, on the R side. His, his, he has a, he has a legal name, but he goes by Bones.
Oh, jeez.
Sure.
And he's been around apparently for a while, but like literally you don't call him by his real name. Like, that's what I was told. Like, it's really awkward. You gotta get used to it.
Commissioner Bones.
Yeah, seriously, that's supposedly.
We'll get there.
Figure it out. Um.
Just for, just for my information, so someone here always has to have the C T deep commissioner inland wetland trainer.
Inland wetland agent needs to have deep certification.
Correct, but doesn't one member of the board also needs to have it? Okay, I just want to make sure I know who has the active.
Hmm, I can, I can forward that to you if you need the certificate.
No, no.
Guy gets.
Just for my own knowledge, as we talk about people coming in and out and things like.
I would be required.
It's a good, it's a good screening, actually. I agree, I agree.
I started it and I forgot.
I'm just saying, for new people, it'd be great.
I make a motion. No, we're not, still three more things. And first of all, since it was just brought up, I would like to thank Cheryl for her help that she's given us over the past year.
I'd like to make.
I second that.
It's been a pleasure.
To thank Cheryl.
We get her proper set off and do whatever she's there, which I'll find out the next family picnic. All right, um, so let's talk about this general discussion, decisions other, uh, prudent and feasible alternative discussion. It's a good one.
So, um, one of our commissioners, who will remain nameless, uh, wanted to discuss this and I think it's a very good discussion to have. Um, and you've given in your packets, um, I think there was a public act that talks about what they are. Um, and you've given in your packets, um, I think there was a public act that talks about what they are, regulations talk about them. And what they really are and that fact that applications really shouldn't be approved unless there is a finding of none of them.
But this.
That's that.
Right, that's what, that's one of them. And then our, of course, our regulations talk about it as well. Alternatives which would call less or no environmental impact. Okay, oh, this one is, uh, page sixteen, but we have, the definitions are. Definitions all that is for it, but, but, um. So, I mean, basically it's your discussion to have.
Yeah, so basically, basically, I mean, the engineers always drop off. Alternatives that are, that are worse than, worse than what they propose it. Here's our other one. We're going to put seventy-five units over here.
Or twenty-five.
Yeah, well, they're supposed to do something less. It, it may not make sense. They may say, hey, we're going to have to put a hundred foot bridge. It doesn't make any sense. Well, there you go. That, that's not, not, uh.
The word is feasible.
Feasible or?
It wasn't feasible. What, what was presented for twelve seventy-one or, uh, you made a point and it's true. It's not. I don't like it. It's, it doesn't fit.
So my question about the whole thing is that if you have like a situation where you're going. You have some land, you're going to put some houses up or you're going to put up a building or something and they. They look at all these different scenarios of what to do with it and they come up with the most. Cost effective or the best way to get to their end goal, right? Which is the least impact, the least amount of earth or whatever, because that's, that's financially better for the developer. Like, who's to say that they haven't brought us the best plan?
No, they, not, hopefully they have. Financially the best for the developer. So there, there's probably a plan that doesn't make financial sense. That could be better. They could say, this is our plan to do it. This is a, an option, but we didn't choose that because of this reason.
Well, I didn't mean by, I didn't mean that by, uh, by putting in. The deepest, I didn't mean by maximize the profit. I meant by the least disturbance. Being like, instead of making it like, I'm going to make this hundred thousand square foot building one level. Right? And then this side is thirty foot higher and this side, so we got a thirty foot cut. Well, actually, I'm going to step up this building fifteen feet in the middle. So that this cut now is only fifteen feet. You follow what I'm saying? Like, to me, that would be.
I understand, I understand.
So, so, so are we asking them to just, I mean, are we basically saying the way around it is to, is to bring three plans? And just take the one you want and make the other ones worse?
No, he's wrong. The word feasible. This is not feasible.
Why is that not?
Because he, he's, he's putting a house right in the middle of the gray, dark gray or his wetland area.
It's not.
No, this is of the site plan. This is the alternate. That's the, you know where the houses are? This is, yeah, that's what he's saying. He's, well, if we could do it this way, I could put another couple of houses in here.
That's wrong. Yeah, that's not an alter.
That's not an alternative.
Not a, a reasonable alternative.
Right.
Right.
It's not feasible. Not, it's not passing us or at least me.
Let me say it. It doesn't.
This is the lot, this is the lot we just talked about.
Yeah, just to be clear, you're using this as an example, we're not actually discussing the application because we're not.
No, 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 I'm just saying that it has to be feasible.
But to, but to that point, you know, I think. Maybe from a staff level, we need, we can start if, if we have direction from the commission. Of what you anticipate to be a feasible alternative, we can start to have that discussion as soon as we get something in that this is not meeting the definition. Of what's here and other things. So for example, um, instead of a six foot wall, maybe they have an eleven foot wall. In order to meet grade, you know, things like that. You know, that, those are some of the alternatives, how, you know, how do we bring that limited disturbance in in order, you know, to have that? Um, can the building be configured a slightly different way in order to have disturbance?
Well, that's kind of like what I said, uh.
Exactly. I thought that was an excellent example of, of, yeah, of what an actual, you know, feasible alternative would be.
Right.
Like you said, showing something that's more intensive of a use is not.
But they want, but they want to satisfy, but they want to satisfy the regulations as show to, they would have done. They would have been presenting the one that I asked for and then using the one that they brought in as their. They would have had, they would have presented ours, but already knew that they were going for the other one.
Yeah, you could present a worse plan, they come in with a better plan.
Right.
Because if it's, the alternatives have, have less or no environmental impact. So they have to be.
I don't like to say no environment. Like, that's like weird to me.
Less or no, but that's what, that's what it says.
The way of having no environmental impact is to literally just take a building that exists. Take the house, the, the structure off of it and put it all around the same foundation. That's the only way to have no environmental impact.
Right.
And the issue that you're having, the issue that they're having is they don't want to propose something that does not meet the pro forma. For some sort of profitability. They have, you know, well, so the question is, is do you want them to propose something that. They as a developer are not willing to do because it does not meet, you know, their numbers in order to have it be.
Well, they kind of came in with a plan that said, we were in a request to remove half of this wetlands pocket, right? So we could put up a hundred and twenty thousand square foot footprint and then have their feasible alternative be the one they're actually showing us. Right? And then the other, you know what I mean?
It's like busy work just for the sake of busy work.
I, I wish that applicants would understand that maybe the commission isn't looking for a complete overhaul of the entire project. But the things that are impacting the wetland the most, like those hot button issues that they can already anticipate you having an issue with. Those would be the parts that have an alternative to them. How they, how they, how they address a buffer plant, buffer area or whatever, that would be, so that you could pick and choose. Something from one of those alternatives and put it on the other plan and, and, and have more of a creative, I, you know, um, application to deal, to pick and choose from. So not, not a complete overhaul of the project, if you understand my meaning.
But I think what it is that it gives them, eventually it's one of those things where they realize.
Yeah, they're going to play the game. They're going to say, all right, I'm going to, here's my hundred unit option that I know I'm never going to get, but I'm going to put it out there. So you guys can say no, and then I'll show you the seventy-five and you'll be okay with it, as opposed to walking in with seventy-five and going, oh, we don't like that.
That's kind of what happens with my culinary views. I say, what, what are your primitive alternatives?
That's the alternative, because if they can legally do it based on all the requirements.
I look at the alternative as more of a particular item, the crossing of the wetlands. What's an alternative to cross the wetlands? What's an alternative to, to keep the grading away from the wetlands?
Not, again, not be specific on that application, but I've seen, I've seen think developments in this town. That wetlands had to have a bridge, like forty or fifty foot span. To cover it. And then I also seen other ones where they just get a box pulver. Usually a box pulver is when the, when I believe, is when the wetlands is already so channeled. That it just really just the brook that you're trying to cross, but when it's a wet, when it's got a lot of wetland soils. You're supposed to bridge over it.
Right.
You know, I know they did it at Cambridge Drive and I know it was a huge job, like it was tremendous to do that. But that was, you know, like I said, it goes all different ways. I mean, I don't think they allow it anymore, but you know, they used to just throw a pipe in. Fill the gravel on the sides, pave over the. But there's now, I guess it's basically down to culverts and bridges for wetlands.
I, as a, as a commission member, I do not want to have to even take a look at a plan that is not feasible. This is crap.
Well, first of all. Well, I just, I just reiterate something real quick, just, I just want to say something. Okay. And I think of what you're talking about on any generic plan, okay, there is design criteria, right? If it designed, there's a handbook for this stuff, right? Design like a crossing or a bridge or anything like that.
Yeah, DEP has, has their manuals.
Their manuals and they, these engineers have the design tour to it. So if it, if it checks off all the boxes when the, the town engineer reviews it, right? You can't really say, can't really say what you just said.
Well, I think he's saying that, that, that their alternative isn't, 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 doesn't meet this requirement of being less impactful.
Right. If there's been a plan that is not feasible in that it doesn't meet all the proper regulations for us. Then it's not an alternative because it, it can't.
Right, it has to. It has to be a legitimate plan.
Right.
Alternative.
I'm trying to say is that they're presenting a professional draw, drawing that's stamped. It's probably ninety-nine percent, point nine percent certain that it meets the design criteria or any DEP regulation. Because if it didn't, one of their licenses is in jeopardy and the second one is the town engineer's job is to pick up on it.
Right.
So, so I'm saying feasible meaning like feasible for us or feasible meaning like, is it a legitimate? Proposal or, or design? So there's two, there's, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Feasible.
So you're saying that that can't be what?
The definition of feasible, able to be constructed and implemented consistent with sound engineering principles. So is it able to be constructed?
Right.
And that's my contention. And certified by an engineer.
Professional engineer crew. Professional licenses.
And it could be prudent, but it doesn't meet the requirements of being less impactful.
Right.
So. And that's, that's, that's it.
Impact is different.
Mr. Chairman, i- i- if I may, real quick, I just want to add one more thing for you guys to discuss too. Is in the feasible aspect, an applicant is going to view it as. Um, you know, there may be something that's a better design, i.e. going from a culvert to a bridge with less wetland disturbance. But now the cost of the project gets jacked way high and now becomes unfeasible for them. So now is that something that they're going to present? I'm just throwing that out there because now that may, that may stop their project. So I just want to add that to the.
And I, and I don't think, you know, I, I understand that completely, you know, one's, one's ten thousand, one's a hundred thousand. But again, if it's, if that is what the land is and that's what it requires according to, you know, the professionals that. You know, design these things, I mean, that's what it is. You know, you can't like say.
Well, they, they, they have to convince us that it's not that the, the bottom over is fine.
Right.
And if they do that.
And then, but they have to show that door down, in order to put the box pulver in and build the road, we're going to remove, you know, fifty feet of wetland on either side.
See, if we get.
We gotta go for it.
Cheryl will have to leave.
But, uh, I think we get, I think we get the point, right?
It also says here, it defines prudent as economical. And otherwise reasonable in light of the social benefits to be derived from the proposed regulated activity. So it does have, you know, it does.
But we can't value engineer their plan for them, meaning like.
You're, you're, you're working on, on what's.
If they, if, yes, if we say.
You're saying you give us something better.
They put a box pulver in and we get a third party reviewer says, no, this should be a bridge. Then we have to consider if, do we, do we trust the applicant? Obviously a bridge is better. But now if they say this is, you know, a hardship, well, if it's a hardship, if you can't renegotiate that, you know, business wise, I understand.
If they're putting in one house and you tell them they need to put in a three hundred thousand dollar bridge, I think it's makes sense.
No, or they're going to go back, they're going to go back with this new information to the person they're buying the property from. They say, we can't pay one point five for it anymore. We're going to pay one point two because you have, this property requires three hundred thousand dollar bridge. The land was built for free, right? You know, so if someone wants to sell it, they may have to, so, so we don't even really have to consider that part.
I have to go home.
All right, we have to go. Yes, you're right. Well, let's just go here real quick. Uh, because I think this site walk policy thing is actually something we're going to do new, right, Kathleen? We're going to make them, we're going to make, I heard that we're going to make it a meeting.
We are, we're gonna make it an actual procedure. We're still working out some of the details. Because it's going to apply to everybody, not just, you know, apply to all the commissions. The biggest takeaways are, is that we want as much as we can to have these discussions in a public forum. We want to make sure that. The public has the understanding that sidewalks will be conducted. If you do do a sidewalk on your own, anything that you observe. On the sidewalk, you need to come back and present it to the rest of the commission and commissioners. Anything that you could use to make the determination, again, we want to make sure it's public knowledge. Um. If we do, uh, do it collectively as a quorum, again, it's a special meeting. It's a public meeting. It has to comply with all the FOIA requests that are going through. If one person wants to do a sidewalk, uh, but the rest of the commission does not feel like it is necessary. All those, those requests need to be done through the chairperson. You are going to have an understanding of whether the whole commission may want to, if it's just one and the first person that wants to, but we don't want one person to go out. And then the rest of the commission say that they want to go out and really should have coordinated it, um, to be timed at the, you know, same time during the application process. And things of that nature. So we're trying to work through, you know, some of those warnings, but the takeaways are. We want as much communication to go through the chairperson as possible. They're the one that's going to contact staff so we can coordinate with property owners and things of that nature. Um, and that we just want to make sure that we're in compliance with all the FOIA requirements and procedurally. Understand that when you go out, it's just about understanding the lay of land. It's not about asking questions and things of that nature. But if there's anything that you observe, when you come back onto site, you want to make sure you present it every.
Now, is there a possible procedure or discussion about being able to walk through as the whole commission at once?
Yeah, absolutely can, but it's a special meeting.
And it has to be open to the public also.
Correct.
So isn't that like better for everybody?
Except for staff.
Not better for them. Staff, is it staff, someone from staff has to be there?
Yes, and we're discussing about it. In reality, the staff should really attend.
Yeah, you gotta take minutes and.
But the staff should really attend if one person's going, it just gets to be really complicated.
We never had staff before when we did one or two commissioners.
Correct, and so that's just something.
We used to have to have like three different show, they have to kind of show it three times if there was enough.
Yeah, but apparently according to that lovely book, um, you're not supposed to meet with the, the, the commissioners are not supposed to meet with the applicant. Without the public.
Really?
Not necess, I mean, not necessarily. I, I think the problem is, is it gets complicated. If the applicant is there, then you're enticed to.
Ask questions.
Question and have those conversations.
Meeting, but that means we have to have a recording secretary there?
You, we have to take meeting minutes.
Yeah, meetings.
We have to have it online.
Hopefully the meeting minutes. Should basically say nothing.
Other than you got there and you walked around your left.
You're orientating yourself, like.
The commissioners ask questions about the location of proposed buildings. They were pointed out in the field. I mean, that should be the meeting minutes. There shouldn't be a lot of back and forth conversation because again, you're only asking questions as it relates to the lay of the land. Anything that has to do with the actual application, you need to be here in a public hearing.
And, and the reason for staff being present is also to help keep the commission out of hot water by, you know. And, and or public by them, you know, it's very easy to get like distracted and start asking questions about the application. So if staff is there, they're literally like, their main job is to help control the conversation to just. Where is this? This is here. That, and that's the only conversations that should be happening during these. So that's the importance. And then this way, every person on the commission gets the same tour, basically. And the same information if they're all together in comparison to like one or two at a time.
What about audio recording device that the staff personally carried?
That's an option. I think legally you're only required to record public hearings and deliberations when we talk about like this. So because you don't have a public hearing or a deliberation, I don't think legally you have to, however. We do have the handheld recorder that we would probably bring with us. It's just not going to do the greatest job of picking up, you know, it's going to be staff.
We'll just tighten up the guideline before the next meeting so that we could plan and know what the procedures are.
Well, it, so here's a question, which I think we can talk about a little bit. Do you want to do the sidewalk as a, as a commission together?
I think it's better, especially with the amount of public on it.
Was it, it would be more if it's being together at once?
That's what it make, that's why we make it a meeting.
Well, if you make it a meeting, then you could all be there at once.
Right, and with not a public on this one, I think it's for transparency reasons, it'd probably be very good for.
Yeah, but then he's got to agree to have all the public on his front, on his property, walking around in, in the, in.
But he has to agree to it. It's part of the process. But yes, that is the pushback.
I, I got a crazy question. What? Want to get like some kind of a drone to like videotape everything and we can just look at it?
Cause you really got to, walkthroughs are, you know, I know what you're saying, but it's the same thing as looking at aerial picture. That's why we're looking at aerial pictures, you know, they can give us a drone video, but.
They do some terrible job when they take pictures.
The pictures are terrible. Well, that's what I'm saying, you get a drone.
But we don't do. We've done average probably one sidewalk a year, honestly, like about one a year is all we've done since I've been on.
I've done like two or three.
Right.
So what we need to do for the sidewalk is, uh, we need to socialize dates a little bit with this commission. So that we can set the sidewalk date here. We can run it by the applicants and the owners, make sure that they understand. So I would like the date to be agreed on prior to the meeting, so at the meeting, we're just setting it.
All right, so I'll, 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 I'll check, you guys, we'll do a group text, figure out the dates. Will work for everybody and then we'll talk before the meeting and then we'll finalize what the procedure is going to be at the next meeting.
If you guys are, if we're meeting as a, as a commission, it's easy. We just have to comply with FOIA requirements and things of that nature. We'll talk about it on public comments. When we talk about the procedures, we're really talking about like if we, if the commission does not want to do as a whole. How does that request get made? How the stack get contacted, just so that we can be consistent.
So just to be clear where I'm coming from, is it, I was given sidewalk guidelines by BJ Hall. In writing that were approved. that were approved by the commission in twenty twenty-two, December twenty-two. I I don't know, I have to, I I was looking, we're talking about, but okay, just.
We're talking about changes.
I I get it. I went out solo and I so when the when the gentleman came up to to the thing, I said, I, you know, I want to visit you, and he said, yeah, okay. And then at the end of the meeting, I did say to you that I wanted to do a sidewalk. And you're like, okay, you know, whatever. It was just it was a comment. It wasn't, you know, a big deal, but it was like, hey, I went to the sidewalk. Nobody else said anything. I went there. I I wanted to see where this building was gonna be put, how I wanted to see how close it was to the wetlands, how what whether the protective measure was there for the wetlands, you know, the hay bales and whether there was chemicals outside like antifreeze and things like that. I asked a couple of questions about training of the employees and what do you do in case of a spill? I just wanted to know that they were on top of it. And I came back and I I was thoroughly convinced that they were on top of it. So I said that at the meeting. I just want you to know that I did a sidewalk, training is up to date, certification is up to date, looks like, you know, what, you know, and I I just wanted to let everybody know that's where I was.
There's also a part of the, there's a bunch of stuff that's being researched by the town attorney about what some of our roles are to be to be active. I think all of us probably came here and never really got like a an orientation, so to speak. We just kind of.
Can I clarify one thing? I just want to use as an example. You are absolutely allowed to go on site as a as a commissioner. That is your right.
That's what I'm saying.
That is your right. We just want to make sure that that request goes through the chairperson in case anybody else also wants to go on site. We don't want to be going back to the owner and the applicant over and over and over again. You know, talk about whether it should be a full commission walk or individual people. Keith will contact us and then we'll deal with that with staff. However, the questions about training, that would be not something you would ask on the sidewalk. That would be something you would have to ask here. The only thing you can talk about on the sidewalk is the lay of the land. Where is the building? Where is the things like that? So no, we're not trying to like impede anyone from doing sidewalks. Absolutely a hundred percent. Every commissioner has the right to go on a sidewalk if you want to. We just want to make it standard amongst all the commissions, how that request gets made and how that conversation happens.
Right, but the word chair was not in our charter, was not in the town charter, none of that. I I went by the by what I and I looked, I seriously looked at it. You know, as far as what do I got to do to to.
I think it's it's a it's a system wide. Not, I want to take.
I looked too deep.
We have to have our own way of doing things. It's gotta be understood throughout the whole system, and I think we didn't have that. And that's why I'm working on it. Yes, that's why I'm working on it with the county attorney.
Great.
But it's not happening like super fast. That's why we're gonna set this new kind of procedure in motion at the next meeting. Where we do the sidewalks, we can get these things done. But it also has to go along with not just the sidewalks, but how we operate, because you know, there is stuff written, but there's, you know, I feel like I feel like every time, and I want to also wait till we get the two new commissioners, so we do it one time. We're all gonna get an education on it. We're all gonna have a sit down, but let's let's get this thing moving along tonight. We'll talk about it again next meeting.
I totally agree. I just want it in documentation and I want I want to be on record to to tell you that I was diligent in making sure that I did things.
Hundred percent. No, no, no.
That was just nice for it.
All right, it's on the record. Let's go to the next thing so we can get out of here. Okay, it is valid, I think, remember?
Okay, sweetie.
Yeah, we're running ahead time. People might have stuff they gotta do when they get home. All right, so public out. All right, let's talk about this public outreach real quick. Public outreach invasive species information, meeting update. So Cheryl, right, this guy's been gone, he gone.
Yeah, he's just, he's MIA.
He ghosted us. Right, we got ghosted by the guy that we were gonna hire to do this thing, and now we have to find somebody else. Did you say, I got your email? Now, did you talk to Bill?
Nope, it was one of those things. I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
Okay. That's what Bill's, that's Bill's decision. Or he should, he should, about whether I should try to reach out.
Right.
To these people to try to vet somebody.
I'll ask him tomorrow morning.
Like, because you're done and we're, you know, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I mean, I I don't have a problem with the fact it's getting pushed because again, we have someone new starting and things like that. It'd be nice for them to be in and and now that understanding.
But I want to know if that there's not that that the the town side of this doesn't have a problem with me making the call.
Yeah, well.
To collect the information.
Yeah.
Not to pick somebody, but it's like they talk to each one of them and see who I think is is gonna work for the job, you know, and make sure, see what their availability is instead of, you know.
I would request that you talk to Barb Thomas, because she's she's got a great background.
She was involved. She was involved in it.
I just want to have that cross-commission discussion so that we're all and we're getting the right person, that's all.
Yeah. Well. All right, so we're good. All right, so we got, we'll get the update. We're not having it next two weeks. We're gonna have it sometime, probably hopefully this spring. Or like in the morning. Want some little gerb? I want some gerb from first one to second. Second by Christmas, do it all favor.
Bye bye.